Stand for a moment, please. And I'd like to ask the listeners, Scott Hoffman, to pledge flag for us and Charles Galloway to pray for us.
Good morning, good evening, good night, Americans. And to the people of America, for which you stand, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear gracious heaven and Father Lord, we just take this time to thank you, Lord. Oh, we thank you how you allowed us to assemble here, God. We thank you for this great country, God. We thank you for these leaders, God. Even now, God, we invite you in to have free course in this church, God. Lord, we love you today, God. We actually continue to bless everyone under the sound of my voice, God. Continue to have your way, God. Give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding, God, how to do things for you, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We'll call the meeting to order. It's 12 noon, August 6th, 2019. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any opposition? Motion passed 5-0. Alrighty, building department update. It's Kelly. We had that. We've got that. Okay, everybody got that. Okay, PSJRA board membership. I don't see Bill here. Do you want to?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, we have two members that are slated to roll off at the end of this fiscal year. And so, I need to know what this board's wishes are as to replacing those two members, not replacing those members. There's a lot of different options. But one thing that I will bring up is with the sun setting of the original CRA, in one year, the members from the CRA will have to be selected from the expansion area. Either have a business located or be living in. So, we need to know the wishes of the board if we want to, how we want to select two members or not.
So, it takes us from seven members to five if we decide not to replace. And those members would serve until 2020?
Correct. Two years, no, 2020. Well, 2020 if we picked them from either CRA.
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Langston, you have your say.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think it should be the, it should be homeowner in that area or either someone that owns a business in that area. Homeowner or either someone that owns that business in that expansion area be included in the CRA.
Agreed.
I feel the same way. Echo that, Commissioner.
I kind of felt like that was a consensus.
Yeah, you can go ahead and speak and get a little applause.
Yeah, you can go ahead and.
Well, I, we was talking about members rolling off of the board for DRA or CRA. And they asked if we had anything in mind about replacing, anybody that wanted replacing. I asked that if we would pick someone from the expansion area, the new expansion area, either resident or a business owner in that, in that area.
Yeah, and I stated that I agree with that. We do, we need individuals from that expansion area.
And Mayor, I believe that was kind of the consensus of our last board meeting that we had. So, I guess the question is, how do we go about it? Do we just want to come back at a next meeting with some names? Do we want to ask people to reply? How do we want to handle that?
I think we need to advertise it. And of course, folks are out there today that if they're interested in serving on the, on the CRA, let Ms. Charlotte or Jim know. And then we can bring it to the next meeting and vote on that. So, if any of the commissioners have a name they'd like to submit, do the same way.
I had one other item, Mayor, under downtown redevelopment. I had my first TDC meeting this morning and was pleased to see that in next year's budget, they've allocated $25,000 for that splash pad that we discussed at the last meeting that we had. That would be in conjunction with the 25 we've already put in for a very nice $50,000 splash pad.
Wow. Very good.
And that's all I have.
Do we have a location to that? George Core Park or?
What we've heard, this morning it was Frank Payton, but last week it was George Core. So, I guess we'll have to continue those discussions.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Up first is ordinance 553, MLK corridor rezoning request. This is before the commission for a second reading and consideration of adoption. If the commission would like, when our request is, if the commission would like to go forward, you make a motion for the second reading and adoption and a motion second. If the mayor would so like, we can have it put thereafter, we can go forward.
I know this is ordinance 553, the MLK corridor rezoning request and its second reading and consideration for adoption. I know there are motions running high on both sides. So, we'd like to ask each one of you that would like to speak on the issue to number one limit, you're talking to three minutes, and be considerate to others. So, with that being said, there would have to be.
Motion for second reading?
For the second reading. And you're making that motion. Okay, there's a motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman. And now we're in discussion. So, anyone like to speak on this issue before we vote on it? Any discussion items from the commission? Come forward, Simon. And please state your name and sign in.
Good afternoon. I'm Roland Higgins, property owner on North Port St. Joe side on 169 Avenue C. And I'm here to discuss some concerns about the letters that were supposedly going out to the property owners of North Port St. And I don't, I can't speak for everyone. I'm just speaking for myself. Neither me nor my sister, Alfred Mitchell, received notice. So, for the members of the community that I represent, that's a huge issue. Especially when you're talking about affecting the homeowners in the area. So, we respectfully request that whatever vote, whatever motion is, you know, going to come, be raised today, that we delay that until we can get some further closure or clearance or transparency on the issues concerning the area. We don't know enough about what's going to happen. A lot of the property owners like myself don't reside here full-time. And so, one of the issues maybe is making sure, I'm a postal employee, so I know a lot about mail and issues like that, making sure that all the information, have up-to-date addresses on all the absentee owners within the community, make sure that, I'm sure you guys want to do your due diligence. I'm sure that you want some credibility with this process. I'm sure that you want transparency. That's all we're asking. Whether you on the left side or the right side of the issue, you know, I know I just stand for what's right. You know, I'm not taking any sides of any, any person. I'm taking the side of right. And what we want to know is what's going to transpire, what's going to happen with this proposed vote. And we want to know all the issues, all the, the things that's going to affect the community. So, hopefully that you guys will take into consideration our request this afternoon and kind of postpone that until we get some further clearance on what's going to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jim, we need to turn this map around so the public and audience can see that. Maybe put it on each side of the podium.
My name is Dyak. I'm a minister, Thomas Curtis. And I'm before you today, Mayor Bezette. Congratulations, and we pray for your family during this period of displacement as we experienced for 10 months. The entire city commission board, I just thank you for the opportunity, especially Commissioner Langston. I wanted to say that the only reason I'm here is because of Dr. David Lamson. We have a very solid relationship and economic development was one of the things that I spoke with him about quite a bit during the time I was governor, with the Governor Bob Graham. I would like to say though, from this governance that I received during research and thanks to city manager Jim Anderson, he's always been most helpful for us at Freedom Foundation. I want to say that, and even heads up with our current mayor, our current governor, Ron DeSantis, I'd like to say that we have an opportunity here to actually take it to another level. And everybody here present today, I agree with everything my nephew Roland said, actually, absolutely everything. We need more sunshine law. Really, we need to have it so everybody gets it. Three workshops and maybe not enough. Maybe we need to take it to the people somewhat, just go into their community instead of having them come to us all the time here. It's a thought, just a thought. And these are proactive ways to address it. I would like to say that with the Seaport coming, we all have to be cognizant that we've got to change our thinking. Change your thinking. At one point in time in my life, I was blessed at 31 years of age, 30 years of age, to be director of Seaports, Airports and Foreign Trade Zones for the state of Florida and Governor Bob Graham in 1985. I've been coming here a long time with Representative Billy Joe Rich Senior, Eugene Raphael Senior, and also Senator George Tapper. I did want to say that in thinking back then as now, this is an opportunity Port St. Joe hasn't had frequently, to be more than a one economy community. This, this level of tourism that would be brought here would be so great that job creation would not be an issue. I happen to be a job creation specialist. That's the title that somebody gave me. But we had to create 800 jobs per year during the time of Lieutenant Governor Wayne Nixon. And now it's 1150 per day in the state of Florida. Everybody's moving here. So, you have to understand that for good reason. We have this economic opportunity and it's appropriate that the name would be such, but we've got to follow the Florida statutes empirically, I mean, just, just to the bone. Because there's more funds available than what I was reading from the 2009 redevelopment plan. One of the things I say to the city commissioners, there are things, speaking of transparency, like this special trust fund in the tax increment fund, we need to find out about that. What amount is in there now? Is it $4.3 million or is it $5.9? See, the numbers change. I'm, I'm from the mortgage banking background, commercial mortgage banking background, and I think numbers. So, how do the numbers match up? Where are we? I also want to find out about what everybody can do. I think it would go a long ways towards us really eliminating a lot of debt. So, I think it's appropriate. I just want to go on record and say that. And sometimes there's divisiveness in my home, but the beautiful part about it is everybody remains open minded. And it's exciting because I think when you talk about the area, you've got to talk about changing your way of thinking. The Seaport, $2 trillion in the next 15 years. Pay attention. It's bigger than you and me. It's about the babies.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I have with me, as we spoke last, last commissioners meeting, we submitted a petition on July 16th. And on that special meeting, we talked about letters. I know you're, the other PAC group have letters. I and several others have walked the streets of North Port St. Joe to all the registered voters, all the registered voters. And this package contained, contained all, most of the registered voters. There are some people out there gathering up some more letters. And what we're requesting that this vote be postponed until those people, all the people listed on your list be notified. Because there's some inaccuracy. We have that gentleman coming up and several other people that they was not aware of, none of the meetings, and not attending. Again, we're just only asking for transparency. We're asking that everything's be done in order of what a department of economic opportunity has requested of the city commissioners to do.
Thank you. Mr.
Fifty-seven names, 75.
Mr. Attorney, I assume we've, we've met all the requirements that have been placed upon us?
Mayor, yes. I'm not aware of any requirement of the city's.
All the public hearing notices and stuff.
Correct, Mayor, and this issue's ripe for a vote for the commission.
Okay. Somebody, somebody beat you to it.
Somebody beat you to it?
Yeah.
That's all right.
I just, I'm here to actually verify some things that couldn't be verified. It was a community meeting in North Port St. Joe last yesterday afternoon to verify some things, some simple things that should be known if there was going to be a vote today. And one of those things were, nobody at the church, and it was pretty well represented by quite a few people, nobody knew where the lines were to be for sure. You know, are they rezoning line going to be from 98 to Ballast Street? Or it's going to be from Avenue A to Avenue D? We was almost finding over, and there was a brim of the pack that couldn't, couldn't verify it either. So, before you take a vote on anything, please that the people know where the lines are. They got homes in there. It's important. Because there's a lot of people that don't want to be in a commercial zone. So, less, less, if you don't know yourself, make somebody get those lines straight so the people know what you're voting on. That's the first thing. I got one more thing. As long as I was in politics, and that was going on all the time, 24 years, let me tell you something. When we wanted to do, do a zone change, and y'all know this, we had to come up with capacity for that zone that we going to change, you know, there's some things come first before you rezone. So, if you rezone in first, to me, that don't make sense. And I think you understand what I'm talking about. Because there's restrictions within that area and rules and regulations concerning infrastructure.
That's right.
If you don't have the infrastructure, if you don't have it, you don't need to zone it. And I could tell you right now, we only have the infrastructure for what's there now. So, if we go with the zoning, the infrastructure should be in first. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Name Marvin Davis, 324 Avenue B, Port St. Joe, Florida. I want to clarify one thing that Mrs. Peterson just stated. It's that a member of the PAC did not know the lines. The lines, look at, look at the map here. Look at the map here. Those lines was discussed. I had the individual from, I think he from DC, he read the plan and he reread those lines. Same plan and the lines that I presented to him, it's those same lines right there. I told those that was in the audience on Sunday night that this plan called for, from Avenue A to D to be commercial, from D to G residential. Those are the lines. Same line that you see before you. Okay, so that was discussed. And I told them that the plan that Ms. Rogers was describing was not the plan that was submitted to the city, that the city submitted to Tallahassee, that Tallahassee approved. The map that was, she was describing does not reflect what you see before you. And I told them, I say, make sure, before you go around and get signature, for people, that it reflect the true map and zone area that being affected by the vote today. There is clarity about what Pike had done and submitted. Protocol has been established and followed, to the best of my knowledge, to the best of my ability. And this is what I think, we, we look at what is going on, what has been asked of you all, is clear. Opportunity for people to come and to see what the plans were if they really wanted, it was available for them. It was available. If, same way I got it, you do your research, you could have went to North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition, and you could have downloaded the same plan that I downloaded and researched, and you will have found this map right here in the plan. She don't believe I got it, I got it before me. So, I see no reason for you to delay your vote today. There's no reason for you to delay your vote today. Everything has been followed. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I pastor Philadelphia Baptist Church on Avenue D. I'm also the president of the North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition.
Hey, here you are. Oh, wow. Yeah. See the end of the light? Big enough to talk loud.
My name is Chester Davis. I pastor Philadelphia Baptist Church on Avenue D. I'm also president of the North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition. My task today is just to simply say that three years ago, we came together as a land-holding community, and we started discussing what it would take to redevelop North Port St. Joe. We call out for the community to be involved with this entire process. For three years, we came to the city to make sure that all the amenities was put on the table and how to go about making sure that rezoning, redevelopment was also adhered to in the proper protocol. So, we had the three meetings, we had all the things that done that according to the protocol and law to make sure that the community was advised on what we were doing. We held meetings monthly, announcements were made throughout the community that what we were trying to do for our community. So, in the last three years, this scenario's coming to fruition, but we want to make sure our community is a little better than what it was in the past. Now, the other thing is, is I mean, we talked simply about rezoning and the opposition that comes against rezoning. We have never been just about brick and mortar. There's also been about bringing health back to our community. So, the underlying drawing here is not just brick and mortar, just putting a rezoning in there, but it's about bringing health to a community. And so, we've established that by bringing everything we had to the city for approval. Our CRA documents have been approved. It went to the state and it's been approved there. And I'm thinking that the commissioners now have all the information and we're ready now for the vote. Now, I don't think it should be apprehended by opposition dislating the game. Thank you very much.
Anyone else before we take the vote? Anyone else might speak? State your name and sign, Ashley.
Good morning. My name is Bernard Dixon, and I represent a property located at 147 Avenue A. I reside in Washington, DC, and I have come to this great city, which is my home where I was born, and I have many, many relatives here and have been back and forth to the community over a lifetime. I recently found out about this controversy and this issue. I receive tax bills in Washington, but I've not received any information about this situation. So, I came here two weeks ago for a birthday party for my uncle who turned 100, Bill McNair. And I came, became apprised of a lot of the issues. I've come back and been here for the better part of a week. I find that there, with regards to this situation and my interaction with members of the community, that there has been inadequate notice provided because the condition in the community is one of total chaos. There seems to be intentional disinformation, lack of information. It's just very chaotic. And therefore, I've gone and I did some study online. I had some questions. I don't know if they're appropriate to ask because there is a lot of misunderstanding and lack of understanding, which seems to be the problem with this whole process. Is it the Martin Luther King corridor, which has always served all of the commercial needs of the North Port St. Joe community? Is it being expanded? I've seen a map that goes all the way back to Babel, all the way up to 98, from A to G. Then I find out, or I'm told that that is not the case. So, my question is, exactly what are the parameters of the existing zone? And what are the parameters of the proposed new zone? Or is there really any change based on the maps that I've seen? Is that a question that can be answered?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, sir. The new proposed map is directly in front of you. It has been expanded. The main corridor that was the mixed use before, which would allow use for commercial and residential, West Primary, Martin Luther King, and the front portion of Avenue A. The boundaries have been expanded to include. The boundaries have been expanded to include a transition zone, a primary retail zone, and a primary residential zone. So, yes, sir, it has been expanded, and that is the new proposed boundary.
Transition zone.
Okay, so let me ask you just to be clear. This section, which seems to take the shape of a one, is that the present zone? And does that represent only Martin Luther King and this small section of Avenue A?
That has been expanded from the initial zone. The initial zone was primary Martin Luther King. I do not think it included Primitive Baptist Church property at the very end of Avenue G, and it did not expand out into the neighborhood in the transitional zone that we currently have proposed in front of you.
Okay, the transitional zone represented by this blue broken line, is that Battle Street?
No, sir, it doesn't go that far back out, please.
It does not go that far back. But it is...you see, this is the problem. This is where we have confusion because you have people who have lived for generations in a community, and now you don't know what is being planned and what the impact of that, whether it be social, traffic, taxation. I mean, nobody knows what's going on. And I know that I have attended three meetings, two in person and one by telephone. And there are people who supposedly have this information, have been invited, but they don't come. And so, it seems to be just an intentional chaos being created and turning the community against itself. I mean, who does that? So, now, at a certain point, at a certain point, the city, if the city is going to adopt a plan, then the city has a responsibility to the constituents who have voted for you to look out for their interests and to make sure that they comfortably understand all the ramifications of the policy that you are here to vote on today. You're voting on a policy that nobody knows what the policy is.
Mr. Dixon, excuse me. You've kind of overshot your three minutes by a little bit. So, if you want to maybe summarize and wrap up with what we...
I would wrap up by stating to you that the members of the community would like to have a fair opportunity to have a clear understanding and to review documents that your actions are based on. And we would ask that you would postpone your vote for a period of not less than 30 days, and that the city planner or city manager, you can make sure that people have access to the request document that you received upon which you sent documents to the Department of Economic Opportunity. Because I've researched and searched for it online. I don't see that document. I see communications between the city manager and DOE. But I do not see what the original finalized document is that you base your recommendations to Tallahassee on. I mean, nobody knows. So, once again, we ask that you will postpone this and give people an opportunity to see exactly what you're doing. And so, we have faith in our government that things are not being done with conflicts of interest and over in the corner in the dark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Cora Curtis. My husband spoke earlier, and he mentioned the word division. He and I do share some separate opinions. However, we do not have all the facts. And I am here echoing the text messages and the phone calls that I have received from family members who are property owners, from other friends who are property owners. Now, we do understand, and we do want advancement. We do want redevelopment. I started out working with the PAC group when we were initially created. And we had a great idea to come up with plans to enhance the community of North Port St. Joe. But before I go any further, Commissioner Ashbrook, I was reading through the minutes, and I saw where a statement was made, and I wanted to have it corrected for your records. It said, Mayor Protem Ashbrook noted, "A lot of interesting information has been presented today," and that the PSJRA has been working with the PAC group for over four years on the MLK project. And not quite four years because they haven't been an organization that long. So, just to correct that for...
Prior to that being the organization, yes, ma'am.
Right, for your records. But the question is, and I think where the concerns are, homeowners are looking, property owners are looking down the road. And you've probably heard this before. We've had terms like eminent domain thrown out. Gentrification. Am I going to be forced out of my property? And these are serious concerns. And so, I was reading through the statute and some other material, and I saw the word harmonious. Harmonious. A harmonious community. And this is what we want to have. But we can only maintain and have a harmonious community, community if we are knowledgeable of, and I say quote, unquote, facts. And so, there has been a lot of things going around. So, I got in and tried to find out for the sake of those persons and the senior citizens who don't have computers, who are not able to go and print the map out, who do not understand the language. And so, now, they are fearful that, "Am I going to have to move away from my property at 86, 90 years old?" And thinking the city down the line because we do know that with redevelopment, when you bring in new buildings, you're selling and flipping properties and so forth, it's going to affect the tax base. And my question was, what does the city commission have in plan, if there is a plan, given that we are going forth with this? And they mentioned infrastructure. Okay. For those persons and property owners who want to remain residential and not commercial, and then when we have the new development, and they are going to become a sore eye in the midst of that, what guarantee are you going to offer them that they are not going to be forced out of their homes because of that? I read in the material, we had talked about the city reserves the right that if they have to come up with other codes that has to be adhered to. Are those codes going to pertain to the property owners? And are they going to have to raise their residential properties to those code levels, which is going to require financial revenue for them to do that? Does the city have a program or a plan where you're going to assist these property owners with the finance to bring their properties up to code? Because again, I'm concerned about the senior citizens who are living on social security income, who will not be able to afford to pay raised taxes. And so, I'm wanting to know, are we looking farther down the road and not just this narrow path as to what the implications may be?
Thank you, Ms. Curtis.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see.
Charles Gavin, Pastor of Jolene Church. Again, I come once in, two point fingers, but ask from the Commission. Came once before to state that Commission need to learn to form some type of policy and procedure. I came once before saying the city need to form some type of policy and procedures on how they're going to operate when they're doing certain things. Now, again, I'm saying the same thing. If we had a policy and procedure, then the peoples in the affected area would have been notified, not simply by email, not simply by the newspaper because a lot of people don't read the newspaper. I buy it and subscribe to the stock. So, there are areas that this Commission need to make sure because you got to represent all of us in this city. So, I'm thinking, like I said, I have been to the meetings with the PAC, and I approve a lot of stuff they doing. I've told the President that. I went to the meeting on Sunday, and I said the same thing. I think the biggest of our problem in this community is communication. I think that's the biggest problem in this community. And what we do, we have certain things that we put out here, and then we expect other people to let them know. But this is affecting the city. Just like you guys call when there's a water break, you got a system. You get on the phone, you call that area and say, "Hey, your water line is broke. We fixing, we working on it." Right? Okay. The reason I said that, because I said this once when we was up there for Mr. Emerson. I said the same thing then about we need to come with some type of rules where you guys just can't jump up in the middle of the night and say, "I'm going to find whoever." You need policies and procedures. I'm still saying that today. And I know this might not be the issue because this is y'all talking about one thing. I'm talking about policy and procedure. And if you get some policy and procedures in place, it'll eliminate a lot of the other issues. Thank you.
Okay, one more? Come on.
Kristen McElroy, Woodward Avenue. I think, Rex, Mayor, I think... I think that the main thing is, we've seen, we've seen these issues over in our neighborhood, right? Woodward, Marvin, kind of turning us against each other as neighbors. You've seen it now here. You saw it over at Highland View. This is a global issue for our community, and I keep saying that. So, what we need to do is exactly what the last gentleman just said. Put together policies and procedures that properly recognize and allow information to flow to the neighborhoods that you are greatly going to impact. And no amount of communication is too much. Okay, that's it.
You got a young lady behind you.
Yes, my name is Sarah Wee, and I have no knowledge of nothing. Hadn't received no notice about rezoning. My home has been in this community well over 70 years. Seventy! What the world, I want to commercialize my own property. I could barely pay the tax that I'm paying now. I'd be a fool to do it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Linda Hill, and I'm speaking in the behalf of Colorado Jones.
Speak a little closer to the mic.
I said, "My name is Linda Hill, and I'm speaking in the behalf of Colorado Jones, which is my mother." We didn't receive a notice. And I feel like we should know something before anyone votes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Greer, the planning consultant for the city. I would like to clarify a couple of things. This is a future land use map amendment, not a rezoning. And the future land use map amendment process is established by the floor statute, Chapter 163, which we are following. It requires the notices to be published in the paper. Now, the city has went a step beyond that. They have notified all property owners of the future land use map amendment, including the ability to enact out of it.
Excuse me, let him speak. Excuse me.
So, as part of this process, what we've done, we went to the planning commission. And that was notified, and that was advertised. That was then sent to the city commission. And when it went to the city commission, that was also notified and noticed in the paper of the meeting. That was transmitted to the floor Department of Economic Opportunity. The amendment that is proposed is to change this area to mixed use. What it does, it increases the intensity and the density of this area. The zoning does not be changed at this time. What we do propose is after this process is done, is to go back and then do an overlay district that will set these zones. And the whole intent is to increase the intensity and density on Martin Luther King and stair-step it off as you go into the residential neighborhoods. And we'll do that through zoning, not through the land use itself. So, the land use, once it's approved, will be on the map. The zoning will not change until the overlay district is done. Now, as part of that entire process, the overlay district will have to come back. It'll go back through the similar process. Now, while it's not a large-scale land use amendment, it will not go to the state to be reviewed, but it will come back through, and have go back through the planning commission and back to you as an ordinance to be adopted. What I would encourage is another workshop. We, me, and the city and the PAC had a workshop back in 2018 in the neighborhood to tell them about that and to get their input. I mean, this is a city-initiated text amendment to their comprehensive plan based on a request from the PAC, and that's what we're following. And I'll be glad to answer your questions. And I would also, I would also like to add, the amendment, and it's required by law, it is posted on the city's website. It is under their agenda for today and has been posted. It's also on the state's website. You can go to the floor Department of Economic Opportunity, and you can find the proposed amendment also on their website.
Thank you, thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, here, excuse me, you have to come forward, but we're trying to limit it...
All due respect, this document that you submitted to DOE says zone change. It clearly states MLK for the zoning change request. So, what he said about the issues that he said, this is what you said to DOE. So, that's misleading.
Ray, you were saying that, excuse me. Transition. Mr. Drew responded to that. Transition.
I don't know what he's reading. I don't know what he's holding. This is the PAC that went to the...this is currently at DOE's website. You can go, pull this back. You can do that right now on the website.
What he's referring to is actually just what the title was called for the place marker on the agenda today.
Oh, for the agenda, okay.
Okay.
This is not a zoning change.
Got you, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we're getting ready to take a vote. We've, everybody's had their chance. I'm sorry, Ms. Curtis.
There is a discrepancy that I like to point out in the names and how they were selected. I think you might want to...
Come forward, come forward.
I hear you're about to say they didn't receive it.
Okay. Because people are saying they didn't receive it. And so, in looking at this list and in the meetings that we were attending, how were the names selected and these persons selected? Because what we have is, we have a neighbor here who's on the list. This house is skipped. Then we have this property owner right here on the list. Then you're skipping the next one. And so, we're trying to figure out why the... And so we're trying to figure out why the checkable...
Mr. Anderson, you'll respond to that. As stated, this was a pack request. This actually got brought to the board for the change itself. This is how this got started. But to start the process, what was done was GIS map. So GIS actually formed a map based on the pack request for the proposed property changes. And then a list was actually done off of the GIS that actually indicated the property owners. So there's actually a copy, Ms. Curtis.
Okay.
So it was generated by GIS on the proposed mapping amendment request from the pack.
Okay, so it would have me on the list, but my neighbor right, right next door is not on the list.
You would, when it would fall under as the GIS map, everybody that's in the mapping area for the proposed change would, would have received a notice of this.
Let's propose a mailing, uh, US...
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Okay, here, uh, we're, Amy, you've had one chance. I'm gonna give you one more. Okay, come on.
We have a commissioner on this board that has four piece of, four pieces of property in the listed area, and it has a conflict of interest, and he should rescue, rescues himself on the vote.
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, is that, if that's fact, uh, Mr. Attorney, where do we go?
Mr. Mayor, this vote is not in near to his private gain. This would be similar to him voting on a tax issue. It may affect him if he votes to approve or disapprove, raise or lower taxes, but it does not in near to his private gain. It affects the community as a whole. Um, I've spoke to Mr. Langston about this, based off my research, and in my opinion, I do not believe there's a conflict.
Okay. All right, here we go. Now, this, this, this is a procedure we have to go through. A vote's gonna be taken unless the maker of the motion withdraws his motion to postpone the vote, uh, for thirty days. So if, if I don't hear that, uh, we'll go, go ahead, but, but before we do, I, I'll make a statement, a short statement, that, like I said earlier, as high motions running on both sides of this issue, we don't know how this vote's gonna turn out, if it turns out for or against. If it turns out for, some folks can be very disappointed. Sometimes change is, is difficult, but many times change is for the better. For the, for the folks in the pack, uh, if it passes, uh, we've talked the talk over and over. Now it's gonna be time to walk the walk. And, and, uh, if, if you're a property owner on MLK, uh, make sure your property's clean. If your property's clean, try to help your neighbor clean theirs up. The whole idea of this was to, to clean up the blight in, in the area. So if, I'm saying this to the pack, if, if this vote goes suit for you, take a, take a good, hard look at your neighborhood that you wanna build up and, and help each other build it up. So when it's all said and done, everybody needs to work together, you're gonna have to work together, because there's just no other way. We can't please everybody. So with that, uh...
Who put the motion forward?
Uh, excuse...
Who put the motion forward?
Uh, Ms., Mr. Ashbrook. And if seconded by, I don't, Mr. Hoffman.
And that was for, that was for...
Reading.
Reading of ordinance and, and adoption of ordinance 553. So, uh, all in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried five up. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance... Justice Mayor. Ordinance 553, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Port St. Joe specifically to adopt town-initiated text amendments to brand one, establish Northport St. Joe mixed-use future land use category to the future land use element in brand two, to adopt town-initiated future land use map changes to redesignate eighteen acres of mixed-use industrial and residential R-2B, future land use to Northport St. Joe mixed-use future land use, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date.
And I hear most of the...
So most you do adopt? Second.
Okay, most by Commissioner Hoffman, second by Mr. Ashbrook. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Most of the pass five. And all right, so let's take a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. Call the eighty-five to order, please. Let's, let's move on. Okay, we're, we're back in session, and the, uh, next item, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item for the commission, commission's consideration is ordinance 559, R-2A allowable uses. This is for the commission's consideration for a second reading and possible adoption, just so the, uh, Mayor, that you're aware, I do have a letter that, um, the resident would like read, assuming that we get to the public discussion point.
All right. Okay, uh, ordinance 559, R-2A allowable use, uh, there a motion for second reading and adoption?
Motion for second reading?
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, and there's a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Langston. Uh, in discussion, go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll begin by reading the, the letter. "We, Ray, and many likely are again submitting a letter of request that the current section 3.21, for N3 of the Land Development Regulations be adhered to and that permanent mobile homes or trailers only be allowed in the currently approved areas of the city of Port St. Joe. Being that we are homeowners located for N40 years within the immediate area affected, we would not like to see the resale value of our property go down because structures are being placed in areas for which they are not zoned. Also, we ask that the board would be considerate of the fact that if this request is granted, it will affect the entire landscape for the city of Port St. Joe and its property owners. If the above referenced exemption request is granted, not only will it affect residents in the immediate area, it will set a precedence for similar requests in the future. Being that you are the elected officials of our entire city, it is incumbent upon you to make sure that the future developments of Port St. Joe as a whole is not jeopardized through you not adhering to currently written land development regulations. Signed, Ray and many likely." And I'll hand this to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear in my mind on, on what we have before us. If we approve the ordinance in front of us now, that would be approving the modular home for that, uh, one area, correct?
Yes, sir. It would be in the area not, um, it's not localized to one specific individual. Uh, if you look on page thirty-four of your packet, you'll see the exhibit A, which lists the, um, parcel ID numbers of those properties which would be affected by this proposed amendment.
Well, and if memory serves me correct, when the motion was made, there was immediate discussion that indicated that if we received any complaint from the community or the area, that we would not move forward with the request. And it sounds like we just received someone bringing that to us.
From, from my recollection, that was from one particular commissioner. I think it's Commissioner Ashbrook, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I just remember agreeing with him.
Okay.
I may not have, I may not have made it public, but, and I felt the same way, that I would support it as long as everyone, uh, was okay with it and it didn't have a negative impact on anyone. I don't think it's fair to move forward with something that may very well have a negative impact on a neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more?
Yeah, I'd like to see some...
Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, with, with the storm and catastrophe, um, that, that happened, and, um, with them being out of their house, their homes so long, you know, my idea, and I thought that maybe that we should, should, should at least try to get these, these people back in their homes. I know that we have, have an audience already set up saying that no trailer should be put up in this certain area, but if we have the chance to change this right now, um, so that people could be allowed, um, because, look, let's, let's just be honest, we're in a situation in our, in our community where we, we need to rebuild.
That's right.
You know, and denying people, uh, the opportunity to do that, uh, we're, we're contradicting ourselves when we do that. So, um, me, I, I think that, um, we should allow it. Um, if we have to come up with some, only a certain amount of time, or do we have to keep it like this, it doesn't matter to me. Uh, I just wanna get people back in their homes, so they can, and their families back in their home.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Curtis, come up.
I just have a question. Would you please identify the area where the trailers or the modular homes are supposed to be under the existing ordinance?
Oh, where the existing one is?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Uh, yes, we're referencing the three hundred block of Avenue A.
Uh, no, she wants to know where they're allowed currently before this.
Uh, currently, there is a two-block radius. I'm trying to remember. I think they have to have frontage on...
Harbor Street?
No, not based...
Harbor.
Harbor Street.
Harbor, that's what I read.
You have a two-block radius. They have to affront on to Harbor Street to allow for a mobile home. That's the only place in the city.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Jim, he, he could have a modular there, correct?
You can have a modular, uh, anywhere in town that does not have a D restriction of those.
Okay. Uh, let's call for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass?
Three to two.
Okay. Motion passed three to, with, with Hoffman and Lowery dissenting.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, ordinance number 559, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending the city of Port St. Joe land development regulations, providing for additional land uses under Article III, Section 3.04, District R-2A, in specifically defined areas, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for applicability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, motion to a dog. So move?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All right, second. You get that, Ms. Charlotte? Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay. Three to two, motion passed, three to two. Okie doke, let's move on. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the deannexation request has been withdrawn, uh, so we'll move to the Marina Cove PUD amendment request. My, my understanding of the request is that, uh, they want to have, allow residential on a lower level and increase density. Um, for convenience of the commission, commission, I did draft a proposed ordinance, but the commission would have the option today to take it under advisement or, um, to approve a first reading and, um, and to advertise. I would ask Mr. Anderson if he had any other input that I left out as far as the request from the association.
Yes, sir. I think you covered the base, so most of this has to deal with residential use in the Marina Cove.
I think to, to summarize this request, uh, in Marina Cove, originally, you could have one residence above and a business below. Uh, there won't be, uh, even if we increase the density, it's still gonna be a, a two-story building. Instead of having a business below, you'll have a residence above and a residence below. Lots are so small, you wouldn't be able to put two residences on one piece of property co, because of setbacks. So that's just to clarify, don't, I assume the way the, the area will look, you'll have, still have the two-story buildings that are there now, but instead of, uh, residence above and, and a business below, you'll have two residences. Okay, does, uh, someone want to make a motion to, uh, first reading of ordinance 404, which is gonna allow the, uh, density to get increased from one to two residences per parcel?
And Mayor, if I could ask for that motion to include the authority to advertise, assuming that motion were, were to pass?
Okay.
Now I'll make a motion for vote.
Okay. Commissioner Hoffman?
Second for discussion.
Second discussion.
I just have one other question. That is not prohibiting commercial use below, correct? It's just offering the opportunity to do two residential units if they wish. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, second stands.
Okay. All right, the motion is second. Discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Most of the pass five up. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could read ordinance number 561. Ordinance number 561, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending ordinance 404 to encourage development within the Marina Cove Planned Unit Development District, adopting certain regulatory requirements for the Marina Cove Planned Unit Development zoning district to supersede requirements in the city of Port St. Joe Land Development Regulation Code, providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lastly, uh, under my heading, we have the Community Garden St. Joe Agreement. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've talked to Mr. Anderson regarding this agreement, and maybe it's a lack of clarity on my part, but my understanding of what the commission had voted or desired to do was to provide, uh, assistance, particularly financial assistance, for this, uh, event or this program, but not to be responsible for it. If you read the license indemnification agreement and waiver of claims, which was submitted by the St. Joe Company, who, uh, is providing a license for use of the property in question, the agreements between the St. Joe Company and the city of Port St. Joe, while there's a lot of legal leave in here, essentially the city of Port St. Joe is indemnifying, uh, for use of the property, the, one thing I would point out for the commission to discuss is that ultimately, uh, with, if we leave the agreement between the St. Joe Company and the city, that the city will be responsible for what occurs or does not occur on this property, uh, as opposed to just being, uh, a financial provider.
Okay, we have a garden club representative here. Ms. Jill, you'd like to come up and speak to that, please?
Hi, my name is Jill Beebe. I live at 808 Marvin. Um, I am currently, uh, the president of the Community Garden Committee, which makes me pretty much nothing. But, in, in trying to sort out how this community garden should be organized without undertaking the cost and, um, expense in time of forming, uh, a nonprofit organization for it, um, a number of members on the committee are also garden club members. And the Port St. Joe Garden Club has agreed to take on the community garden as a special project, which according to our understanding would, um, then make the community garden part of the 501(c)(3) of the Port St. Joe Garden Club. To that end, we have also approached our insurer to get liability insurance for anything that would happen at the community garden property and that would hold harmless or cover the St. Joe Company, the city of Port St. Joe, the garden club, and, uh, the Community Garden Committee. Uh, we were told that we could get that, and indeed, it was a lot cheaper than getting an independent policy. Frustratingly, we were told that a couple of weeks ago, and I have been unable to get back to them to actually get us that addition to the policy. My understanding was that the St. Joe Company did not wanna write any kind of letter of agreement until they knew that some sort of insurance was in place. And so I've been working with Commissioner Langston to try to get that insurance in place and then approach them with, um, the assurance that it would be covered.
So, so I think she answered your question pretty much, that the, the agreement should be between the garden club and the St. Joe Company and not St. Joe Company and the city of Port St. Joe.
Yes. And if I could ask, if I could, and I, I will gladly, as long as the commission does not have an objection, assist in facilitating, getting this license agreement corrected with the garden club. If I could be provided with the garden club's, um, legal name that would be found on public record, because it is 501(c)(3), it is a corporation. be filed on public record, because it is 501(c)(3), it is a corporation.
Right.
I'll make the changes and reach out to the St. Joe Company, as long as the garden club is okay with it, as long as the commission has no objection to it, um, I'll make those changes and reach out to them and explain where we are, and certainly include you in the court of justice. But I'll, I'll help facilitate what I'm saying.
Okay.
If that's a help.
Yeah. And just, just for clarification, the garden club is doing this out of support for the community garden, and because of legal matters, things that the community garden do would have to be, come to the garden club to make sure it doesn't, um, legally impact the garden club. But the garden club in no way wants to take over the community garden. The community garden should remain a community garden involving everybody in the City of Port St. Joe.
Right. Super. Very good. Thank you.
If I could just.
Ms. Beebe and Ms. Albrecht, thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask her to take my business card so we could communicate with the information I asked about.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. I think what we're, what we're going to do next is we're going to, it's okay with you guys, we're going to let, uh, item under new business FEMA Community Recovery Assistance. Uh, Mr. Cassie Studsill here for that agenda item and let her come forward if she'd like to. And, uh, and you had a FEMA rep with you there. Okay, very good. You guys come forward, uh, we'll let you jump ahead a little bit.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. I'm John Russell. I'm the field coordinator with FEMA for, with, uh, Community Recovery Assistance is what we're calling ourselves this disaster. Um, what we are is a, a group of primarily urban planners and, and associated skills, and we, we want to reach out to local communities and offer to help. Um, our staff has been meeting with Cassie several times, and they met with the American Institute of Architects and, and tried to help, help this application process along. And I guess I just want to say, we think it's a great idea. We're very supportive of it. We want to assist it and support it in any way possible. Um, we've, we've talked, in fact, uh, one of our key staff members worked with the University of Florida lead for the fiber program, which may ring a bell here. It's, it's the, I think I get this right, Florida Institute for Built Environment Resilience. Um, it's a new program out of Gainesville. This gentleman was in, at Louisiana State University when we worked in Baton Rouge before, and so there's a relationship there. There apparently really want to help out and work with Port St. Joe. So what, what I guess we as FEMA employees would do would just try to facilitate. We could, we could facilitate public meetings. We could meet with you. We could, we could research things for you. Just any way you need us within the next, say, four months or so, we're here to help. Um, jokingly, but we like to say we're the part of FEMA that says yes. So, don't quote me on that, by the way. I don't want to get in trouble. But, um, so that's really all I have to say, and if I, if you have any questions, please, I'm here for you.
Okay, thank you. Cassie, if you'd like to.
Hi, Cassie Studsill, 204 Memorial. Um, I want to start first and just say.
A little closer.
Is that better? That the objective and the primary objective of this, of this five months worth of work and 57-page document now is, um, that seeking to create a unified plan for recovery growth for the City of Port St. Joe by creating an ongoing effort of collaboration that will stand the test of time and weather any future storm. So whatever I say, if you can keep that in mind, then, um, I would really appreciate it. Um, I spent the last five months compiling, um, have to reach now to the American Institute Architects, and, and we spoke about this quite a while ago, is with the, we started it with the Citizens of Gulf County Long-Term Recovery Team, and, um, Pat Harmon and I worked very hard against letters of support. And then I did a lot of research and a lot of writing, probably more than necessary. Um, but I was able to go through and identify eight different problem areas, and I'll just quickly read through those. The first one is housing. We all know that's the biggest. Economy, jobs, education, funding, place-making, quality of life for full-time residents, connectivity, infrastructure, resiliency, improvements, information, um, planning and improvement elements. So those eight different objectives, eight different problems were identified and expanded upon within the document. And then, uh, I came up to an objective, and the objective is connectivity. So as the CGC RT was going through and reading the document and understanding the full scope of it, they really realized that they were focused on the individual, and the better home for this is with the city. So I'm here today to ask you to allow me to submit the document on behalf of the city, um, with the support of the CGC RT, and to, I'd love to remain the, um, you know, the point person. I've been intimately acquainted with this, intimately, um, lost my train of thought there.
It's your baby.
Huh?
It's your baby.
Yes, it's my baby. It is. It really is. Um, and I, um, I'd ask that somebody else on the city to work with me as a secondary point person so that, um, we do it the right way, and we do it together, and we do it for the benefit of the entire city.
Yeah, okay. And I, and I certainly appreciate all the work you've done. I've, I've talked to other people, and they, they praise what you've done, and they say it's the best written document they've ever seen and so forth. But, with that being said, it's complicated, and it's detailed, and I can't personally vote today to do that until I know a whole lot more about it, and, and I would, I would urge us possibly to, uh, have a workshop so we can, we can sit down and, and have time to highlight our questions and just have a thorough understanding and, uh, of what, what it amounts to. Are we trying to change the whole city? Are we just trying to change the one or two areas? What are we doing? And, um, that's, I, that's questions for workshop, not here.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
First thing, this isn't committing the city to anything.
Yeah.
At all. This is simply an application to submit it to the American Institute of Architects, asking them to come here and have those workshops. In fact, having not just one workshop, but multiple workshops over a period of times and days. This is only identification. It's not the end-all, be-all. Um, and my only fear is that we're trying to align and connect with fiber, uh, and their school semester starts on the 20th. I was hoping to have submitted this through the CGC RT three weeks ago, and that's been delayed. And so I'm afraid that we're going to miss that window of opportunity in connecting with them. Um...
I, I just don't want to, uh, the, uh, RUDAT, uh, group, I don't want them to get the idea that we, that we, uh, approve their plan and come on down and let's talk about it. I'd rather understand what the plan is before we ask anybody to come and help us.
There is no plan.
I do have a question, Mayor, if that's.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Cassie, my, I think this is just essentially an application to get the RUDAT.
Correct, for a grant.
And, and RUDAT, in a nutshell, is a group of individuals that have specialty sets and skills. They will come and assist us.
Mm-hmm.
With whatever we want.
Exactly.
So the fact that we've named these things, whether we agree or disagree with them, how beholden are we to your list of items that you've presented in the application?
We're not, we're not beholden to them. They can be modified. They can be added to. In fact, when the, when, first, we, the reason I want to get it in and get it in as soon as we can is to hopefully align with fiber so that we can align, and we can connect and, and what, and some of the things that come out of this entire process, because this is only the first baby step in the entire process. So, and that's just the submission of the application. So the next step is inviting, and they're going to find a team leader within, and that's why I'm suggesting that I have somebody within the city that is the second communication person, that any communication with the AIA, we do it together. So that it's, I'm not, um, how can I, what am I trying to say here? Not, um, I'm not going outside of the scope of what is, um, what's wanted. So...
I just think it's easier for us to understand. We're not committing to anything except asking for the resources, and then we can task those resources to do what we need to recover. Is that essentially?
And what, is there a dollar amount attached to that grant?
It doesn't cost anything.
Well, when I spoke to the AIA initially, they indicated that we were the first, the first community to reach out to them, uh, that events is a victim of Hurricane Michael. Nobody else, no, no others had, and that they, they would step up to the plate, get their, get your application in. I, don't please.
With all due respect, though, I mean, I just got this, and I, I certainly might have time to read it before I make a motion to move on. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, man, um, and, and we're not, like I said, we're here to help. We're here to facilitate. We're not really advocating anything. Um, I do have some, in my former life before FEMA, have some work, um, some experience with groups like this RUDAT process. And what they are is a team of architects, national, and they're, I, I believe they're paid, but not by you. And they come in, and they, I think it's about a week, very intensive kind of a study effort, and working with the community, and then they, they prepare the plan. Now, what, what is lacking in that? You said a process, and I think this application initiates that process. If we, as FEMA, can help, even if it's, if you decide not to approve it today, if we can help and support some discussion about it, um, we're more than happy to do that. I do think also, what Cassie said about the fiber group, that is a great opportunity. They're, they're a group of seven or eight professors out of University of Florida, and they would bring in graduate students to support you. And it's, it's, you'll be talking this for the next year and a half, or at least a year, I suspect. So it is probably a very good opportunity. I just want to make it clear that we're here to facilitate whatever we can.
And Mayor, I did speak to the gentleman from the fiber program who's heading this up, and he, he's ready to talk. He wants to know, you know, what, he asked from, he's going to be asking from us, what do we need research done? What, what do we need? Do we need, uh, a drainage, a drainage plan? Do we need to work on connectivity? If we, and we're not, we're not, we don't have to do anything. Uh, they're going to do the research, and they're going to present us with a paper. We're going to grade it and hand it back to them.
I have a question, Mr..
Go ahead.
Um, I, I read where it says there's a cost of $50,000 to $60,000 involved. Can you explain when that cost would come to being and who would cover? And the other question would be, is there any cost to the city at all to just approve and submit the application?
No, no cost for that. And yes, I have the same question. That was exactly his response to me was, we understand you guys are cash-strapped, a cash-strapped community, gone through a lot. We will step up to the plate. That, uh, they have ways of assisting and helping and funding with, funding these types of things, and, but it takes us getting that application in to get those wheels turning. So this in no way commits the city to anything. It can be added. In fact, it will be added too, because we're asking for engagement. Uh, you know, I sent the, one of the drafts out to 50 different, um, listed, there's 50 different, around 50, if you take a look at page 47 or 8, I want to say, the list, actually, I take that back, it's 43, the, the steering committee list that I started, um, was some folks that I have identified, and I'd like helped beefing that list up. Um, and, and starting to engage the, the, um, community and the businesses and stakeholders and, and, and all that in this process, because that's what needed. It's about coming together, um, as a community and creating unity and moving forward together.
And this application idea is coming actually from the long-range planning committee that was formed?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on two committees with it. Um, the Building and Construction Committee and the Finance Committee. Clay is the chair of the Finance Committee. And, uh, it's, we've been looking at different grant opportunities, um, and, and how can we help, how can, how can, what can, what else can we, what can we do to bring in some funding? And that's a big question. That is also be asked of the, of the AIA is.
Right. And commend you, you ran your committee for what you've done, because I went to the first meeting and, and listened to what the ideas apply to have this committee and, and how the funding can come through the committee. Uh, I think if our job is to support, uh, the committee in every way that we can, because that committee is actually representing the entire community of Gulf County, and especially the City of Port St. Joe. Uh, I'm fine with approving the, the application submission, being submitted, as long as we're not, uh, tasked with a, you know, a future payment for submitting.
Is there any guarantee of that?
There is. There, I, I can, I can reach back out to Joel Mills with the AIA and, and get that, have him confirm.
Yeah, that would be.
Confirm that. And, and if there are any additional tweaks and changes, you know, I know there's one section in there that I've, um, regarding education, that, um, I have a call tomorrow, and looking at with, with Mr. Norton, and looking at tweaking that to make sure that my facts and figures, everything's accurate. I don't want to submit anything that's not accurate, uh, obviously. So, and...
Well, you, I heard the FEMA representative say he's the guy that says yes from FEMA, so I'll, I'll put you on the spot now and ask if we are, uh, sent a bill for the application process, would FEMA pick up the, the charge?
Succinctly, no, sir. But, but what, what I would add to that is that if this is an application, you don't have to sign any letter of agreement. You don't have to say yes when, when the formal proposal comes in. Um, that's, that's just endemic in any kind of, um, agreement like this. I suspect she's, she's very right in that there's, there's no long-term cost, but you as a commission certainly would want to be aware of that. And, and, and I did, the other thing I'd point out is, you've got two things on your agenda. One is this application, and two is just the, the short, one paragraph letter asking for our assistance in any way that works out. And that's, that's kind of a bureaucratic step that, that we have to go through. We need to have you ask us to come. So if you want us, we're here.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, just, go ahead, Mayor.
You, you mentioned connectivity, and it seems like you're, you're pushing that mainly right, right second. Can you explain why or what's going on? I'm, I'm missing something there.
So, as I was doing a lot of the research I'm here, I noticed there's a lot of groups in the area that are working on this product, and this product, and this product, and this project, and we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, and that's making Port St. Joe, bringing it back to what it was, and not only doing it back to what it was, but making it better. So when I talk about connectivity, it's not only physical connectivity within our environment, but it's a, it's a connectivity of our, our groups and our government and our citizens and all working together, together to achieve, achieve something great, really.
That's right.
Does it, uh, does it bring another layer to, to what we're already doing? In other words, we've got, we've got the long-term recovery group. I assume there's someone that's, uh, the go-to person in that group. Now, is this, this going to come in and overlay that? Uh, are they in agreement with having someone look over what they're doing? I'm just a little bit, I mean, we're about to, we're about to meet ourselves and study ourselves to death, and what we need is some money for, to help build this community back.
I, I agree, and I think that's one of the big, not only housing, but funding is one of the big aspects. Um, and one of the things that was addressed to me by Joel Mills is that they, when they come in, they gear the expertise to the needs of the community. And I expect that that sort of, sort of expertise, that the city was to go out and hire that, it would be pretty expensive. Um, these are people, you know, coming from all across the country, and sure, they have a different perspective, which sometimes is good. Um, they have a, a viewpoint that you can kind of do a bird's eye. It, it's sometimes easier when you're, when you have a bird's eye level, and then you can talk to people, and that way you get both sides, you get all sides of the story, really. So, um...
And I think, Cassie, it says, it says it in the title, Regional Urban Design Assistance Team. They're a resource that we could delegate to those committees, Long-Term Recovery Group, and say, y'all are trying to figure this problem out. Here's our resource, our RUDAT group. Work with this group now and figure it out.
For, for example.
It's a tool.
Right, it's a tool, exactly. Uh, for example, one of the items that the, the long-term recovery team keeps coming up with issues with, um, is a lot of, I guess, life estates, and there's certain things they have to, they need to get occurred, and I believe the city's having that same issue. So how can we, how can we help? How can this help solve that problem? Is there a way that we can, you know, bring in a supporter on, on the committee too, to help, help us overcome that? Uh, so... Um, I do want to say one other thing, that from the beginning, I have been working with, where's Caitlin? Caitlin is right back there. She's met with... She's met with me multiple times, her and Tan both initially, and Tan's not, not here now, but I've been working with Caitlin from the very beginning, and she has, while not written it, she has been instrumental in helping me flesh out the, the entire thing. She's read multiple drafts, she's made comments, she's done some editing, she's, she's come back and said, did you think about this? And, and well, you may want, you may want to consider not putting that, or rephrasing that. So they've been, we've been working on this with them through, from the very beginning.
Can I say something?
Please, go ahead.
I think what you said about connectivity, that's very important, because it is, it is important that we stay connected and do what we need to do in order to make some improvements in our community. And I, I just want, I got a question. Once you, once we get this started, initiated, and, and these people come in, how are you going to make the decision on, on where you allow them, where you allot them at, where you allow them to go? But, but the, you have a board set up to make these decisions, or is it going to be a committee that you already have constructed to make these decisions? What I'm saying is, how are we going to determine which, what is needed, and when, how bad do they need it in, at that time?
Great question. Great question. Who do they answer to?
Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, one, there is a reason for all this gray hair. I have been, I've worked for cities for about forty years before I came to FEMA. And, and the question you're asking, I think, if I can paraphrase it, is, how do you make sure that, that all parts of the community are reached out to and brought in, and, and that, Mayor, you talked about, we've got all these different groups, and are we just adding another layer? That's what, that's probably one, one way we can help, is we can facilitate and make sure that all, all the players are talking to each other, and that the end result is, starts to make some sense for you as a, as a commission, because ultimately, you got adopted, or nothing happens. That's, that's the bottom line here. But, yeah, and I think the other thing you may want to consider, and I, I don't want to speak for the RUDAT team, because I, I don't know anything about them, frankly, but if they come in with a process like this, you would want to talk about, is there going to be like a, an oversight committee that, that is appointed, that, that works with this beyond the Long-Term Recovery Group, perhaps? Or is there, do you want to bring in your planning commission? How you want to structure that is an important part of the discussion. And, and again...
I don't, I don't mean to continue to be a little negative, but you, you said, we'll make sure they're talking to each other. Well...
Well, we have a fry anyway.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, somebody's in charge, and you come, or this group comes in, and now all of a sudden, somebody else is calling the shots and, and saying, well, the city commission authorized us, and by application, to come into the city and do this. Does it, does it mess up things that we've already got going? I know you, I mean, Commissioner Langston had it, you're right, who, who's, basically, who's in charge? That's what I want to know.
And Mayor, I think that what we're looking for is somebody, and I, I wasn't in any pressure that we formed a long-term recovery group, that we would have somebody giving us a report on the status of what the group's doing every meeting. I think we're missing that head, that point person that reports back to this commission, and I would hope you graciously accept that position and let us know what everybody's doing.
Somebody, somebody needs to...
Well, what I'm, maybe I, I didn't say it well, but what we can do is facilitate. And we can, ultimately, it goes back to you, you're the decision-making body, but we can, we can facilitate and try to make sure that it's a broad discussion. That's, that's what I was trying to say, if I didn't do it well. I apologize.
Okay. All right. What do we want to do?
Well, Mayor, we got two potential motions here. The first one is asking FEMA for assistance, which I think is a no-brainer.
Yep.
We can use all the hope we can get.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to ask for FEMA assistance.
Second to that motion?
I said it.
Yep. Motion and a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed, five votes. Second motion is...
The second motion would be to allow the submission of the RUDAT application with, have the city of Port St. Joe submit the RUDAT application to get their resources started, get the program started.
Just one minute, if you don't mind. I've seen a long hand back here, come, come right up and...
Kristy McWhorter, Whordward Avenue. It's going to be a long day today. I guess my question is, as a member of the public, where's this application?
Right.
And so, okay, that's the first time I've seen it.
Seven pages.
Right.
We need to read.
So I would ask, until the public has a chance to look at this application, which is a lot, that everyone kind of tabled this. What's the big hurry? I mean, what is really the big hurry?
I don't know.
Yeah, me either. It, it kind of makes me wonder. And I look down on this agenda, and of course, I see workforce housing, and again, some of the rumblings out in the community about that, and what land is going to be set aside for that, it's a little concerning to me.
We'll get that in a minute.
Yeah, no. So I, I would ask that we have a chance, as the public, to look at this application.
I, that's, I voiced my concerns at the very beginning.
Mayor, I, I was going, I was somewhat prepared to vote on this today, but I know you mentioned a workshop, so if that's what you feel, we need one, I'm, I'm fine voting that way.
I just, I, I'd have to digest a little bit. I know it's simply an application, but it's a fifty-page or so application that I don't think any of us really have read thoroughly enough to, to even ask questions. And that's, I'm, I'm sure I'm going to have some. Before I, you know, I don't like signing contracts, I haven't read it. And that's, that's almost my opinion. It's, can be a vote, and if it, like, vote.
I do have a question on that, on the public reading, and not that I have an issue with that, but do, does the public normally read every grant application, or is that just a standard? Is that normal?
I don't, I don't, they have an opportunity to do it, but, but if we don't have any kind of workshop, they, they won't have the opportunity this time.
Is there a way to fast-track any type of workshop, so that we can...
We could find a day that everybody is able to meet. All, all this, five weeks.
It would have to be later this week.
Okay. I've got seven and eight. I'm out of town on the ninth.
You got a publishing period?
I can get the seventh or the eighth. So, eight, eight is Thursday, the seventh's tomorrow.
Thursday's night.
Thursday, good. Commissioner Langston, Thursday, Thursday, Thursday at what time? What time you guys, at least noon? Huh? Noon, okay. All right. It's public workshop, it'll be twelve noon. I'd like to have a motion of that effect. Twelve noon, Thursday, the eighth.
Yeah. Mayor, I will draw my motion. That's a motion for a workshop on the eighth of noon.
Okay, there's a motion to have a workshop on this RUDAT application, noon Thursday. Your second?
I got a second with discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
I like to say this, I, I like what I read right here, but I haven't had a chance to look at the application myself either, so I think it'd be best for us to read over the application and, and just get a viewpoint of what it's saying. But I, I really like what I see in it so far, so, yeah, I think a workshop would be fine.
Does everyone have a copy of that?
I think we need to make sure we have a copy of it on our website for public...
Mayor, we got the complete document today. I did email it to you, so I will put it on the city website this afternoon. Okay, great. Great. So there's a motion and a second, your second stamp? Okay, all in favor, aye? Opposed, same sign, that workshop Thursday at nine noon.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Well, Mayor, even though it's not official yet, if you would like, we can come back on Thursday and just help facilitate that workshop. I, in all honesty, my staff has been involved in this thing quite a bit. I have not read the application myself, so if you'd like some...
Either you or your staff, or, or all of you, we'd welcome you to come.
Okay, we'll be here Thursday, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, I'll find where we are. Oh, okay, Mr. Jim, under old business?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The first items that we do have are reference to two RFPs. We did re-advertise for the Buck River and Lake Timber Bridge, and we went out for the first time for the Frank Page Park gazebo in Pinnin Pavilion. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids at this point in time. Staff recommendations that we do rebid for the actual bridges themselves and prepare to regroup on Frank Page Park. But that's what we suggest, we rebid with the different bid specs that Mr. Grantman has prepared, and bring it back to you as soon as we get those bids, uh, specs put out.
Very good. Okay.
Okay. The next item we have is in reference to the Police Department building. Mayor, does that want to talk to us tonight?
Well, I'll talk to you again about it. I think we need to have a police station downtown Port St. Joe. We, we had a bid earlier that, that got tabled, I guess you would say, and, and Jim reached out to that gentleman, and hasn't gotten any response, so what I'd like to do is rebid the, rebid the Police Department and see what it comes back at. And we somehow got to figure out a way to get the Police Department back town, where, downtown where people want it.
Can we include that with budget discussions? Because I, I mean, I'm going to hold firm on, if we can't get that additional officer, I'd rather have the officer in the building. And, and so if we can work that into the budget talks.
What, what additional officers?
Officer.
Officer, okay. I thought that was already in the budget.
It is.
It is, but if any, if we get an insurance change or something, you know, I don't want to drop that. I'm all for this, as long as we can have that extra officer.
Right, and we do have some insurance money, and, and there's some other money that we can pull from. I think we can get it done for about eighty thousand, which fifty-five or sixty is already there from insurance. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe it was fifty-five, I think it's... I believe that's accurate.
Is that right?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, so we'd have to come up a little bit and get it done?
And I'm, I agree with Commissioner Ashbrook. If, if we can get the building fixed, and it does not cost us the additional position that we've asked for, and it's in the budget, then I'm fine with it. But if I have to decide between a building and another policeman on the street, I'm going to go with a policeman. Right now, we are strapped as far as, we have times where there's one patrolman on the road. If that person was to get sick, or, you know, the family member got sick, or kids get sick, they got to scramble and go to calling people in, and we deserve better protection than that. And I think that the way to go is to get, get boots on the ground first, and then we'll figure out where we're going to house.
I agree with that. I think everybody up here probably does. Yeah. Okay, under new business.
Mayor, so it's the we should...
Whoa, 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 I'll hand go up quickly. Former mayor, come on up.
Bo Patterson, 609 10th Street, Port St. Joe, Florida. Aren't we staying free right now? Is it causing us anything to be in the courthouse?
No.
Is it causing anything? Well, why the rush? Why we got to be down there in that same place that was nothing, I didn't like it to start with? Didn't look like a good police station to me. Looked like a hole in the wall. So why we want to pay eighty thousand, whatever, to redo that? When one day, we may have a new town hall center, and then we'll have a new police department, new file department, everything. I'm looking forward to that day.
Me and you both.
So I say, let's don't rush. I understand that some people that want that police department back where it used to be, and I don't know why, but I've been told. And I just don't understand why we can't leave it where it's at right now. Like I say, Michael Hamlin has been very gracious to the city. He's let them stay free, he's built them a vault room for their evidence, but we didn't have a place to keep evidence. So I don't see the rush. Thank you, man.
Okay, now let's go back to new business.
Yes, sir. The first item under new business, workforce housing need. Commissioner Ashbrook want to talk to you today about it?
We keep hearing the same thing over and over again, housing, housing, housing. There's not enough places for people to live. A lot of businesses are struggling to keep employees. I would like to see this board start to get proactive, and let's see if we can identify all parcels that we own that maybe could be used for affordable housing uses. I mean, we did it with the Paces Foundation. I'm not advocating that we take state or federal dollars, but there's ways to do it. I've spoken to a gentleman who deals in land trusts, and it was the first time I ever heard of it, and the concept sounds great on the surface. I think that there needs to be a lot more research, but I think the first step towards housing is identifying parcels. And let's not keep it to just what we have. Let's ask for the St. Joe company again. I mean, they've done it in the past. Let's see if maybe they have some parcels, and maybe will take pity on us right now, and see if we can't get some, some more donated land for that purpose. And that is all that I had. I just want us to start thinking about that, and if we get staff to identify some parcels, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that, that's great. I actually had a gentleman that wanted to meet with Jim and brought a realtor along. I asked if I could attend the meeting in Jim's office, and it's funny how when there's a need, sometimes the private sector will find it. This gentleman's got a contract on, on seven acres and wants to build thirty workforce houses. And so I haven't heard anything to the contrary. Have you heard anything to the contrary?
No, sir, I haven't talked to him since the day we met.
Okay, and he seemed very encouraged. He's, he's ready to go. He didn't want a thing from us. He just wanted to make sure that, he didn't ask for a, a zoning change to increase his density, which he probably could have gotten, but he didn't want that either, so it's, I thought it was great. Throw that out to you.
Y'all say something?
Yes, sir.
We really need housing, but that's what I want to really focus on, housing, not apartments or anything like that. We need housing for people to come back to working, workforce housing. So, and, in order to draw people back, we need to start thinking about rebuilding, rebuilding jaws, bringing jaws back to the county. Once you bring jaws back, you got to have housing for them. And I'm not talking about apartments. Come on now. I'm talking about something that somebody can eventually own and call their own, you know? And, and I appreciate Commissioner Ashbrook looking into this. We really need to start concentrating on, on where we need the housing, where we can put it at, and I'm behind you 100% on that, Commissioner.
I do have one fact, Mayor. In our LDRs for an R1, you have a minimum footprint of 1,200 square feet. Right now, the average cost to build is between 180 and 200 dollars a foot. There's not many of us here that can afford a house. That's without the land cost built in. So there is no such thing as workforce housing in the city of Port St. Joe at this time. We got to figure out a way to bring those costs down, and if that means, you know, giving land to help it to be more affordable, I'm all for doing whatever we can.
Yeah, we definitely, that, that's a lot of money, especially for somebody trying to recover and get back. So, so just let me know what you need me to do.
Well, I hope we can work with the county. They've got the grant that they will, they will allow you eighty thousand dollars toward a house that's no more than what, Brad, 160?
160.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 160 to 180,000 dollar house, and that does not include the land. So the gentleman I talked to thought that he could make his work, the thirty houses he going to build, so these people could get the eighty thousand dollar grant from the county. They live in the house ten years, they forgive the eighty thousand dollar. So it's actually a good deal, so I hope we'll move forward with it. Okay, let's go number two on new business.
Yes, sir. The next item is SCOP grant. The city has been rewarded an additional SCOP grant. This is actually coming from the Florida Department of Transportation. This will be from the segment of First Street from Highway 98 to 71. It's here, Mark IV funding in the year 2021. So it's good news for the city.
Very good. And that's a grant?
Yes, sir.
How, how's our infrastructure under there, Mr. Grantman? Our spot there at Donut Shop and CBS?
We need to look at it.
We look at that before we save it?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Okay, CDR McGuire Task Order.
Yes, sir. CDR McGuire. Uh, the city has put them on retainer, uh, along with the county to assist the city in needs that may come up arising from our FEMA grant application process. Currently, city staff is working with FEMA to prepare, uh, all of our damages from FEMA, load them into the portal. City and McGuire has gave you a proposal that would actually go behind city staff if you feel appropriate to look and see if there's anything we may or may not have.
And that's to the tune of ninety-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for three months.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I gotta comment on that.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I spoke to Jim about the, the price tag, because, uh, obviously I was concerned as well. It's my understanding that FEMA will reimburse the city for this cost up to five percent of the total amount that we claim. And we did the math on it, and if our math was correct, then we would have to find two million dollars, uh, that, that we would be putting in a claim for to recoup the entire ninety-five thousand dollars. We are already at that point. So we would be getting the money back. It would be a lengthy timeframe as far as when we would get paid, but we would be compensated for the ninety-four thousand dollars based on the two million that we've already submitted. Correct? Is it Ms. saying that right?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Craig. The, uh, the question mark is just how far back is it coming before you get your money back? What you would need to do is you would need to go ahead and find this ninety-five thousand dollars to go ahead and pay, because they're wanting, they're gonna want to get paid within, I would imagine, by the end of the year. So you would need to budget that ninety-five thousand dollars to pull something out of your budget for it. But yes, sir, I do believe you would get the hundred percent back based on what I would have been told.
But, but let me ask you this. The two million, we've already submitted that, so we don't need anybody's help to do that. We can use help for another two or three.
Anything that we may have missed exactly, yes.
Yeah, I think that, that's their goal, is to look at what we claimed and then go back and claim additional properties. And to give you an example, uh, I, I was talking to staff just yesterday about the air conditioners at the Centennial Building, and I'm not sure what we found out, but I don't believe we even claimed the air conditioners at the Centennial Building. And not long ago, there was a hundred and fifty people in there, me being one of them for a birthday party, and only one of the large units was working. The other three wouldn't even come on. And, and I think it's fair to say that, that the, the water submerged probably every unit, uh, at the Centennial Building. So I, I, you know, it's a lot of money and...
Jim and, and Mike and myself had a great meeting with a FEMA rep, uh, last week. I think his name was Greg. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Greg.
And, and, uh, he was more than helpful. He, he explained Mike about the portal and doing, doing some things. So I, and Mike and John had gone out and compiled a big, or they are presently compiling a, a big list of things that, uh, that we haven't done. Roads, infrastructure. He said, do it all, and you can do your arcs under a four-twenty-eight program. If you do all your parks under this four-twenty-eight program, and you get a bid for, say, two-fifty for that bridge, and we do it for fifty, and they've approved the two-fifty, then we can move that two-hundred to any other park in the city by four, called four-twenty-eight. And so he gave us a lot of, some, I guess what I'm trying to say is, do we need to spend ninety-five thousand? We got a couple of good staffers over there that's on top of it.
Right, and that's the question I've been torn between. I know that Mike has done an amazing job for the city. There's no doubt. Uh, and I, I don't know if we can afford the ninety-five thousand dollars, being the fact that we're not going to be reimbursed for maybe four, possibly five years. That department concerns me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I think I'd also like to hear some staff. I mean, if, if they need the help, uh, I mean, that's a concern too. I know there's one already.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, certainly. Uh, having someone look over it wouldn't be a bad idea. Um, we certainly can look at it in the budget process and, and discuss it more about trying to find the funds. Uh, but, but certainly, we think our number right now is about two million. Um, and then that five percent would be recoverable, but certainly at the end of the process. Uh, so, uh, you know, if we can look at it in the budget process and find the funding, then maybe it does make sense to get some support to look over our show.
We feel like we've got a whole lot more out there than the two million, and of course, the air conditioner was just a small item, but, but I, I asked them to submit Long Avenue due to the debris haulers and so forth impacting our roads, and, and we appreciate that free service from FEMA, but, uh, they did impact our, our roads, and, uh, so we're gonna shoot for the money, try to get it.
Certainly. And, and to go back to the Centennial Building, you know, during the, the initial review with insurance, there didn't appear to be any, any problems with the AC unit. So they weren't included, so therefore they weren't included with FEMA recovery. Uh, so, so we certainly can revisit that. If we can justify and validate that those units were damaged from the storm, I certainly think the insurance company would step up.
Yeah, Greg, Greg said, uh, delayed admitt, uh, submission to FEMA, you know, you could do, as you find things that are, were impacted that you didn't see initially. And I know you're talking about insurance also, so we need to just reach out, try to get all we can.
So I, I think staff has some uncertainty too as to whether it's a, a good idea to spend the ninety thousand dollars. Uh, but, but we certainly can discuss it some more in the budget process and see if we can find that funding.
Let me ask one more question. Is the ninety-five based on what the work we've already done?
No, the ninety-five would be the work that the, the consultants would come in and then start charging us for the support. Uh, I certainly think maybe we could, we could reduce that by being efficient when, when they come in and, and really tackling, uh, their supervision and their work and make sure we're on top of what they're doing for us. But, but, uh, we don't certainly need a consultant to come in and drag feet and, and delay billing just to, to rack up hours. We need them to come in, give us an honest assessment of what we've done and where we may be missing something, and then we can reevaluate, but...
Are, are you guys fine with them maybe going back to them and seeing if, having a little bit of that type of discussion?
I'd like to go back to them and see if we can get the price down. The first offer they gave us was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So that tells me they're in the game to negotiate the price. Uh, my initial idea was to offer them less based on a guarantee of findings, uh, and see, and see what they say, you know? They have to, uh, find us a million dollars in, in unclaimed liabilities or...
Well, Jim and I certainly can go back to them and, and, and try to be more specific about what we're looking for from them, and maybe narrow down the scope of the work that way. We've been very fortunate to have, uh, Mr. Cosby from FEMA coming here. A lot of cities, I don't think, had that luxury that we've had to work with our staff to put it all together. He's helped us put all this into the portal. So Mike's getting close to the finish line to getting all these items put together. We're on the big ticket items now, the roads, the sewer, those type of items on there. Uh, basically, this is just to come back and, and do a final look through and make sure that we did not miss anything. Did we miss something? I'm sure there's things we missed. Uh, but you also have to account for your insurance. Your, basically, my understanding what you'll have is you'll have your request into FEMA, then you have to take off what you receive from insurance, which is close to two million dollars already from insurance. Your consulting fee, to my understanding, can be up to five percent of the amount that you get from, that you request from FEMA. So I would suggest that we take a look at this, take no action today, uh, continue to look at it to see if, uh, if we can work with the consultant.
See, uh, Jettie Park, guys, uh, the bulkhead of Jettie Park was impacted. We didn't get that initially because, like the FEMA guy said, they didn't have drivers to go down there like the engineers did. And, uh, Clay helped us out with that, said, I mean, cause that's a big ticket item. Now, whether we decide to rebuild it or not, uh, underlayment, under the, uh, rock fill down there, they'll pay for that. But do we wanna do it? Maybe not, but we can use those funds to help us out in other areas.
And the biggest question to our staff is that ninety-five thousand dollar upfront cost. That's the biggest thing we gotta decide. So what I would recommend is give everybody a couple of weeks to look at this thing and decide if we wanna pull a triple twenty-five thousand.
You gonna reach back out to them for what we discussed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are, well, you got, yeah, no question. All right. Next, next item?
Yes, sir. The next item is another big ticket item that we have that we're working through the budget process, on computer upgrades. As most of us have heard, there have been, uh, a lot of, uh, computer hacking going on with municipalities and counties. We're to a time now that we have to make some decisions about our computer system. Normally, you replace all your hardware about every five years, and we're at that end of life. Our computer system made it through the storm miraculously, but it's time for replacement. A couple of things we need to decide. Currently, our platform for utility billing is done through MUNIS. Right now, with your license fees, you're roughly eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a year for your current license fees. We now have the ability to go to the cloud with calls of fiber that's been put in Port St. Joe over the last, uh, year that we had the city hall after the storm. So that is now an option that we didn't have in the past. To do that, it does help with cybersecurity. Uh, it does give some additional functionality for the city staff if we were to hit with another storm, or if we were to have, uh, catastrophic damage to city halling computer information. You could go anywhere that you have internet access, do payroll, utility billing, they're tied to that. So it does give you that luxury. But it does come with a price. The current price for MUNIS to handle that capability off-site is roughly forty-two thousand dollars a year. So you're more than doubling what your licensing costs are there. Uh, you don't have to replace all your, the as large a number of computer equipment as you had before, which was usually around a hundred thousand dollars every five years. You would only have to have servers capable of handling what we have on our desktop computers. So what you're looking at this year would be in the neighborhood of around ninety-six thousand dollars. That would include the ongoing costs that you'll see every year from here on out of roughly forty-five thousand dollars, uh, plus the upgrade this year. So, uh, this is something we've gotta make a decision on, uh, the next couple of weeks based on the upgrades that are needed to MUNIS itself, uh, in order for scheduling to get these type of things done that would not start after, until after you do the budget.
You indicated to me, Jim, uh, if we do this with MUNIS, it gives us, uh, some other capability that, that we'd have to pay extra for now under our current MUNIS license.
Currently, we're self-serve, meaning that we're handling everything on-site. We're roughly paying eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a year that's offered. So now, if you go, if you go to this, what they call SAS, SAS, kind of the abbreviation they call it, what this does sends it off-site. So basically, you're going through the internet to do the services on there. But it does give a protection to the citizen that we currently do not have. It's an extra level of protection that they guarantee through MUNIS, because we do have sensitive information that you can...
So what we're actually looking at is an additional around twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars a year over what we currently pay.
Correct.
Currently paying eighteen, and we're going to forty-one.
Forty-two.
Okay. I think it's a deal. Something we gotta do. Riviera Beach has had to pay six hundred thousand dollars to some hackers. And there's others, multiple, so, so I, I certainly...
To my understanding, uh, Gulf County and Lynn Haven, I believe, has already went to this platform several years back. We, we just self-host because it was a cheaper option for us. Is it the best option? Probably not, but we were just trying to save money.
Is this expense built into the budget that we've seen?
Yes. Currently, I believe Mr. LaCour has a hundred thousand dollars in the current proposed budget to go either way.
Okay, very good. So we'll, we'll decide on that in our budget, uh, meetings, or you want a decision now?
The one thing we do need to decide on with MUNIS because is their scheduling, because you're due for an upgrade. So they do need an indication that work would not be done until October, but if we wish the board to go towards the SAS platform, we do need to call MUNIS and schedule the upgrade and the changeover in October.
So, so you need a motion to, uh, upgrade a MUNIS system?
To go to the SAS program with roughly forty-two thousand dollars a year with MUNIS.
Okay, I hear that motion. Anybody?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Based on staff's recommendation.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ashbrook. And further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Or the same sign, most cheers, five of them. Okey-dokey. Uh, next item.
Yes, sir. The next item we have is a request for speed bumps on Seventh Street. Mr. Tom Budrum's here today to talk to you.
Appreciate your patience, waiting two hours and ten minutes for this.
It's a record. One of the good things I've got here is this is not a big ticket item that we've been looking at. And I'm struck by everything that's been talked about here today about it having to do with neighborhood improvement.
I think a little bit.
Struck with everything we've talked about here today having to do with neighborhood imprisonment and, uh, neighborhood protection, protection of, of, uh, quality of lane.
Yes.
So this ties into that in a way. It's just a microcosm of, of the, some of the plans you've been talking about. On Seventh Street, I don't, did you guys read the letter?
Yeah.
The fact that, that Seventh, Seventh Street's unique in that it's flanked at, at Memorial Drive, Memorial, by two convenience stores. And especially before the storm, and I'm sure we can say the same thing after the storm, we have guys flying down the street to get their coffee in the morning, back down the street to go to work. We have the same thing at noon for lunch, and then afterward, they come to get their cold beer to the stores and then back down the stores. This is, it's a twenty mile speed limit along there, and it's consistently exceeded. Uh, also, there are heavy trucks coming up and down that street, delivery trucks for the convenience stores. Uh, you know, these, the, the old neighborhoods of St. Joe were not, these neighborhood streets were not designed for this kind of traffic. I mean, my house was built in nineteen twenty-nine, and, you know, there weren't that many automobiles on the boat in twenty-nine. Now they're traveling faster, bigger, and quicker. So we've got a petition here of twenty houses on the street. We've got twenty-seven signatures of folks on that one block who are in favor of this.
Tom, is that, uh, ninety percent of the homes, or what would your estimate be on, on your, your petition?
Well, there's twenty-seven signatures, and there are only twenty houses. Sixteen of them are, are occupied. Four of them are not occupied.
Okay, okay. So husband and wife may sign, both sign petitions.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, yeah, there's, I don't know of anybody that opposes it on the street. Uh, I know that, I know that there's opposition from, from police departments and, uh, and safety departments, and, and there may be a better way to handle this. And if there is, I'm certainly willing to, to look at that and talk about it. Uh, I notice, you know, we're talking about recovery from the storm. Nobody said anything about traffic flow during all of this. Maybe there's, maybe it's time to look at some traffic issues. I, I ran into Chief Herring at the ballpark the other day, and we talked about some things that he might like to see, that might think would be better money, words in his mouth, but, uh, just some issues that, maybe this is a, more of a global issue we should look at. I know there's, I know people on Long Avenue complain about it being a raceway. I know people on other streets complain about speed and excessive traffic. And I know, uh, the, the traditional answer to that is enforcement, but we don't have it, and we don't have the manpower. I get it. We're looking at one more police officer to try to fill gaps. I think there may be some, uh, some, uh, ways to, some inexpensive ways to relook at the infrastructure in the streets and traffic patterns and see how we can solve some of this.
Well, I, I, I certainly think, uh, if somebody come before this border that has ninety percent of the homeowners on the street want a speed bump, I, I think it probably will have a speed bump. I call them silent policemen for lack of a better word, because we're, like Commissioner Hoffman said, we're already taxed. They can't sit down there on the edge of Seventh Street and try to catch somebody flying down there. But we're also somewhat, uh, liable, because if we allow it to happen and somebody gets hurt, then, then we aren't gonna be in a pickle. Same thing happened to us on First Street and both of them. So, uh, I...
I, sir.
You don't have a problem with it?
I see something that's meant... I definitely don't have a problem with it. I've been asking for them for, um, almost, uh, six, seven months, almost a year for them to put over there in Lee'sville, and we do something about L and O eight. So if we can go ahead and get it started, let's get the ball rolling. I mean, I understand about, um, enforcement. I'd rather have them in residential areas than on the main, uh, uh, road.
Yeah.
I'd rather have them in residential areas than on the main road, such as Long Avenue, Avenue A, or whatever, but I do believe that we need to look at putting some in some residential areas because it is a lot of speeding in those areas.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to put, they asked for four, was it four?
Four.
Four speed bumps on Seventh Street between Long and Monument. Is there a motion to?
I've got a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Two, two on both ends, two on both blocks.
I would suggest sort of space them out, because what I foresee, people come from the gas station and they accelerate all the way down the street till they have to brake to get the stop sign. So I would suggest a spacing.
He's thinking four from Long to Monument, not on Long to Wood, because I don't think any of those signatures.
None of the signatures are in that second block, no. That's all the...
So none on, none from Long to Monument? I mean, none from Long to Wood?
Right, right.
Just that one, that one block that we are inundated with traffic that was never anticipated for residential neighborhoods, especially not when this was built. I mean, if you look at the history of the streets as they come out, the connector streets were designed to handle more traffic. If you come out Tenth Streets, the city grew, Tenth Streets is wider and has more setback. Sixteenth is wider yet, pavement and more setback. So as the, as the city developed, you know, the rules were changed to accommodate the automobile. These rules that were, or the infrastructure that was set up in the neighborhoods there was never designed to accommodate what's happening.
Commissioner Ashbrook?
I've just had a question on the price and then a comment as well.
Okay. John, do you know ballpark?
I'm trying to recall.
Similar to the ones that are on First Street, I assume, is what we're...
Well, the last ones and the only ones that we put up on Fifth Street, Marina?
Fifth, I see. Yeah. Both of them.
And it was basically one lane, seems like it was around three fifty, so if you're going to go all the way across times four, you're thirty-eight hundred and four driving?
Really?
Yes.
That is a big-ticket item, right?
Hello. I tell you what, can, can, Mr. Buttram, can we get Mr. Vanland to do a little research, see what we can come up with, look at the cost, and then spend a while, can you wait another two weeks?
And see how we can...
See how we can make it work. We may have...
Different spacing.
Drop to three or two, or, you know, something of that nature. Get folks' attention.
One other piece of this, too, is, it's not really in the petition, but is weight limit signs. We get delivery trucks to stores down there.
Yeah.
School buses, I mean, and I know that that street's been torn up several times. We've had to rebuild the piping under there, so.
Clay's shaking his head, but I would have to get him to determine the weight load on that road.
Joe, we'll work on that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Eric, on that one note, it seems that I'm losing...
Yeah, I'm going to get to it in just a second.
It seems as if I'm going to lose the speed bump battle, so I'm going to ask for a little bit of a compromise. There's other lower-profile, they're a lot wider. They still go up their speed humps, they're more visible.
Yep.
And they're not such a sharp, you know, you're less likely to damage someone's vehicle.
I prefer that as well.
Yeah.
Because I'd have to drive on the street because I lived there.
Perfect. And that's what we put on Fifth, where humps are.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not a proponent of them either, so.
Look at that, you just got a fifth bump.
Okay. Ms. Curtis?
Just wondering if that's something that requires a traffic study or approval from the Department of Transportation?
No, city streets.
City streets? Well, good, because I want to piggyback on that and thank Mr. Buttram.
Buttram.
Because we have that same issue that has been brought to the attention of our Commissioner Langston on Avenue A. And so if we're going to get into putting speed bumps, we get ready, we're going to be back and want you to do the same thing.
Wonderful.
Amen.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Oh, Mayor.
One more time.
Remember, you've got three minutes.
Buttram, since we're on Tenth Street, I don't know, I'm just sitting back there listening, and I've sat on this board for eight years, and I've never had a say we're going to put speed bumps. It's always said, no, we don't want to put them. And if you do put speed bumps on that little street, you might as well get ready to put some on a lot more streets because you're sitting in the present.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, we need to do stuff to slow people down. Mr. Buttram, you ought to come to Tenth Street. Boy, you talking about running some stop signs? They don't hardly slow down with them stop signs. And we need speed bumps there. If we're going to start putting speed bumps around our town, I'm going to advocate for speed bumps on Tenth Street.
I do, too.
And, you know, we've got children on that street playing baseball during certain times of the year. And I think it was mentioned one time and it was shot down, so I don't know why we're so easy to put speed bumps in now, hell, if it been in the past. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Letters to property owners, that's on my item. And what I have done, and I've put it in your agenda guide just to let you know what I would like to do, is send a letter out and print it on the back of the utility bill and just basically ask folks to clean up the property. This nine months in, if you've had a lot cleared off and compliments of FEMA hauling your trash off for you and your trees, and now you've let it grow up, you know, we want you to clean it up. And the letter reflects that. That's all it asks. Said we've been leaning on code enforcement, but we're probably getting ready to drop the hammer down if we can't get cooperation. So like I said, neighbors helping neighbors, let's try to get cleaned up and looking good and get over this. So that's, that's what it's for. And basically, I'd ask, does anyone have an objection to the letter, the way it's written, or anything you'd like to add to it? If you would like to just maybe give some comments to Ms. Charlotte?
I think it's perfect.
And we can add, add to it, take away from it, but I want it to just be as, as easy as possible.
One of the, one thing I want to point out, I think one of the main, one main issue that I see that's happening is we're starting to get the washing machines and dryers and refrigerators put back on the side of the road, and, and, I mean, nobody's going to pick those up.
That's right.
I mean, so I, I mean...
We got removal of any remaining hurricane debris, responsibility of the resident. We got that in there because it does seem like, and a lot of contractors, unfortunately, they're putting it out there thinking we can pick it up, so anyway. So any comments, additions, attractions, give Ms. Charlotte, let's get it. I think the utility bill's going out when, Jim?
Middle of the month.
Middle of the month. So if we can get it on that, let's, let's try to get folks to clean up a little bit. All right. Public Works?
No, sir, I have nothing unless the board asks questions for me.
No good? Go ahead. Public Works? You didn't, okay. Water plan?
Nothing, I don't have anything either, Mr. Mayor.
Did any bids back on yet? What is it?
We're still accepting them. We're going to accept them through the sixteenth. That's when they close.
Sixteenth, okay. Then we'll open them?
Yes, it should have something for the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Mr. Kevin?
Nothing new for the Commissioner.
The lagoon, biologic and all that, not working okay?
It's working. We have about...
We got one little complaint about some odor last weekend.
A mixture of grease that picked up some of the algae and odor.
Okay.
So it's done now, but it's fine today and yesterday.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything else.
We had about two or three days for, that's what we were looking at.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, Finance?
On the budget, I've got a new action item out of today's meeting, and that is to build in the repair of the PD into the budget and see what we can do with that. And then Dwight and Charlotte and I have had correspondence today on our property and vehicles, so he is working to try to develop our insurance and be able to push that through. So we're working with Dwight on that, which is a big holdup on our budget, is our health and then our property and my building insurance. So Dwight is working that issue today. And other than that, I work on July's financials. We're tracking pretty well, and our revenues seem to be holding steady, and I'll put those out here at the end of the week.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
I've got something. On your budget, well, not your budget, I'm sorry, the insurance that we're getting from these storms, are we gathering all this, these, these insurances together before we start allocating, where we going to put the money?
Yes, I have a summary, and I can include that in the next meeting package of what funds we received and expended by property.
Okay.
And I can put that in the next package for your review.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clay finally got to you.
I really don't have a thing, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, unless I want to talk about road bond, what you want to do with your balance.
Yeah. We've got eighty thousand dollars left in road bond.
I think, I think it's about eighty-eight, yes.
Yeah, eighty-eight. Anybody got suggestions?
Can we spend any of that money on speed bumps?
The Kennedy did indicate that that was an expense they could use it for, or you could use it for.
Okay. There you go.
That's good idea. Also, if that takes care of some of that situation, Jetty Park, Clifford Sims Park down there, we need, we could possibly look at repaving that area down there, and it's highly used. It might be a good use of that.
Yeah. It ain't that bad.
Do you, do you all want to ask Clay to give us an estimate on that?
Didn't mention something about, about...
Brought it up last meeting. Talk briefly about it. I think, you know, that area also would qualify under your FEMA claim. I'm assuming it's been submitted to them, I don't know where it is in the process, but a, you know, road bond probably gets it paid faster, you know?
And not, well, yeah, but if we, if you give us the estimate and he hasn't, or even he has included it, then we can four-twenty-eight that money to George Court Park, fill restaurants or something.
And I'm under the assumption he can get it. I mean, FEMA's reimbursable programs, you're going to spend it anyhow. So if you want to do, spend your road bond to pave it, get it reimbursed under FEMA, you still, you still basically have that eighty-eight thousand. Have whatever it costs to do it.
Yeah, right. So, so do we want to?
Yeah, I would support that. Go ahead, get the estimate.
Estimate and do, yeah, Jetty Park. Okay, thank you so much. All right. Code enforcement, we've got our list here. Richie's out doing his job. What I ask him to do, and I just said, Richie, look, if it's me, or Jim, or you, or whoever it is, if it's a code violation, and we've made policy for him to follow, follow it to the letter, we don't interfere with him. They've got nine months, basically, I believe, no, excuse me, three months, ninety days, I think, for that thing to run its course if it keeps going to the special master. So that gives somebody plenty of time to do what they need to do. So we just, I think we've got that to do. Or we're going to still get refrigerators and all that on the side of the road if we don't get him to do his, you know, write them up.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't interfere with Richie, and I don't look hard of that.
No, no.
I would never want to be getting in trouble in a hurry.
Commissioner Langston, have a comment?
We thought about hiring someone to, I mean, I thought we had in the budget, wanted you to hire someone to help Richard with the, with the code enforcement.
I, I believe we did add that, but we tabled it, didn't we?
I don't, well, probably, that was probably last year.
I'll review that in the budget to get some feedback.
Okay. Because I, I think that there's so much going on, there's so much going on right now, especially with debris and empty homes or vacant homes and these cars everywhere, vacant cars, that he actually, I think he needs a little bit extra help if it could be part-time or whatever.
But you know, look at, look at the building, let's take the Chevron Station on Highway Ninety-Eight. Do they have a permit? Are they, are they in the process of rebuilding? Are they going to let it sit there forever? That's the code, Dave.
Right, we're coaching.
Is, is, everybody, I mean, express lane, are they going to, are they going to work out that container for the rest, you know? So we got to get folks, kind of light a little fire under them a little bit, and let's, let's get this place cleaned up. So, okay, Police Department, Mr. Rusty, y'all good? You want to get back downtown? No, you don't have to answer that.
Twenty-three years. That's what my car looks like every day.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Charlotte?
Just would like for you to look at the date that we suggested for the Christmas parade. I know it's a few months out, but it takes a while to pull it together. So if that meets everyone's approval, that's normally when we do it, the second Saturday of December. And if blessed, we'll proceed, and if you don't, we'll figure one out still.
I think we have to, have to set the date and stick to it. So anybody got objection to it?
What day is that?
It's Saturday, September the fourteenth. First, each of you will participate, whether it's in a golf cart, walk, and riding, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay.
And need your support and help with it.
We'll do it, huh?
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Okay. Citizens be heard. Come right on up. Mr. Robert jumped up first in four minutes.
Well, actually, I wanted to get up early. I took off work to come, but I'll be as quick as I can. Robert Branch, Ten-Six-C, Auburn Avenue. Sure, I got one to give you, but I'm, I'm actually going to show.
Sorry. Mr. Hofflin, appreciate you a couple of weeks ago going to hurricane preparedness at FSU. I believe you were good to show, and maybe Matt Herring went. We appreciate that. What I want to talk today is about some of the same things I spoke two weeks ago. I've got seven pictures here, some a month before Hurricane, excuse me, some one month before Hurricane, some during, and some after. Okay, picture number one was taken on nine-five-eighteen at eight-ten a.m. This is our tidal-driven stormwater canal and valuable wetlands between Tenth and Sixteenth Street. This canal is approximately thirty feet wide, six to eight foot deep in places. If, if, okay, this was taken after several days of hard rain. The stormwater canal is full and flowing, full and flowing. The ground is saturated. It is keeping our neighborhood from flooding. Remember, this is one month before Hurricane Michael. I took this picture, I took most of them. Somebody else give you some of them. I took this one. Okay. If y'all would turn to page two, I appreciate it. Page two, picture two was taken on nine-five-eighteen, the same day as the first picture, behind the residence of Ten-O-eight, Ten-Fourteen, Ten-Sixteen, Auburn Avenue, pretty much right in the middle of them three residents. The stormwater canal is full and flowing as designed, is fully flowing as designed. The ground is also still saturated. Water's backed up, but remember, it's flowing. It's backed up behind our homes, at our property, on the edge of our property. That canal is doing all it was designed to do sixty years ago. Okay. This is the same place you all voted, excuse me, all but one of the four-one vote, to put this massive sports complex in our neighborhood. The picture y'all looking at now is the hub of the three fields. Okay. You should know what this would cause. This would cause major flooding to our yards and homes. This is where, y'all, y'all look, okay? This is not the place to build a sports complex. Four y'all voted for it to put it there. Mr. Hofflin, you voted, you had all the right answers. You voted to take it to the field of dreams. Okay, I'll spend enough time on that picture. Picture number three, okay, is the same, pretty much the same place, taken on the same day. It's the same floodwater backed up behind my home at Ten-Sixteen, Auburn Avenue. The stormwater canal is again, it's full and flowing, keeping our neighborhood... The stormwater canal is again, it's full and flowing, keeping our neighborhood from flooding once again. Okay, this is one month before Hurricane Michael and the water is still, the ground is still saturated. These three pictures were taken the same day, a minute apart, within a hundred yard radius. Page four, let's jump across, straight across the ditch, looking back toward, uh, Tenth Street. Same day, this is actually resident on ten oh three Woodward Avenue. What he was doing was making a channel with a shovel to give water that is backed up in his backyard under the poorly designed walking trail to the stormwater canal. Now, where he was backed up, he was shoveling through his fence, channeling to a covert, to, excuse me, to a covert to get into the stormwater canal. Not good engineered. All these four pictures were the same day, one month before Hurricane Michael. Picture number five, you wouldn't? Picture number five was taken on October tenth, two thousand and eighteen, during Hurricane Michael. This is the backyard of a home behind Marvin Avenue and Thirteenth Street after the floodwater had started receding. The water actually got a three foot higher than what your, what, what this picture's showing. When the weather cleared up, people come out and start taking pictures. Okay, what happened, the stormwater canal, it equalized. I spoke to y'all last, uh, meeting ago about equalizing. Water equalized unless you got a pump that's going to run level where the flow is. I don't care what you do, you know, it's going to run water uphill. Okay, it equalized. Okay, this is the same place. We had at least five foot water at all of our yards. I'm, I'm still thinking between Tenth and Sixteenth Street.
Robert, let me, let me help you speed up a little bit. You've, you've gone way over your three minutes and so.
Ah, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm almost through, I appreciate that. I am almost through. I know, I actually left work and I, I've said, I'm, I'm, I'm doing the best I can.
Go ahead.
I'm ready to get back to work.
All right.
Okay, picture number six was taken during Hurricane Michael. This is a kayak at the same place behind Thirteenth Street after the floodwater started receding. If this stormwater canal had have been piped, all this water would have been in our houses. This is water under him. When you build it up, guess what happens? It goes up. This water would have been in our house. Clearly said, okay?
So, so your main, your main purpose of these pictures is, is to be against piping the ditch, is that right?
Well, that's what, that's your?
Right, I mean, you're, you're against piping the ditch.
Okay, page, page seven, that, that, that again, where I'm going.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but once more, this canal, now see, I, the canal that was dug, can Rex, being you, uh, you kind of broke my banal, do you know, you've been here a little longer, so you, a few years older, can you tell me exactly what year this, I know it's been here over fifty years, because I can remember when this canal actually run all the way to First Street and, and it wouldn't pipe then, but when it was piped on the other end, that's when they, uh, people started flooding.
I really don't remember when it, when it started.
I, I remember it's been here at least fifty years. John, could you, uh?
I really don't know, Robert. I mean, that's a long time.
I don't know.
That, that might be something we need to talk. Everyone engineers this ditch, y'all might want to go hire him back. John, I'm, I'm scared, because to dig a, to dig a stormwater canal, he knew what he would do. He's kept us from flooding for over fifty years, because I can remember as a kid, eight years old, on Tenth Street Park, before it was voted to cover then to gain real estate, that I know it's been here fifty years.
I don't think so, yeah, probably sixty.
Do y'all agree with what I said about the kayak? Okay, let's go to page seven and I'll finish that. Picture number seven, this is the same canal and valuable wetlands at Tenth Street looking south. This tidal-driven stormwater canal and wetlands is what saved, okay, here we go, what saved and has always saved us from complete destruction due to flooding. Along with saving is us from the most powerful five cataclysmic hurricanes this town has ever seen. Look at that, look at that canal done, yeah. It saved this neighborhood.
Yeah.
It didn't save yours, but it fortunately saved ours. Okay, in no way should any portion of it have been piped and these valuable wetlands build up. Okay, Mr. Ashbrook, I'm going to kind of gently put you on the spot.
Robert, we got to get to the end here.
Okay, I got, I got.
We got other people. Other people need to speak.
I know, but, but Rex, let me, let me say something.
Okay.
You actually said that, and I should have held my hand earlier, I left work to come, I should have, I should have spoken the first part. I apologize for that. I should have, and I would have already been gone back to work. Okay, Mr. Ashbrook, you said last meeting that Hurricane Michael was a five hundred year storm. You stated the NERDA grant would be used to improve stormwater throughout Port St. Joe. I would never believe it was a five hundred year storm. So we already getting ready, Mr. Anderson said that, we getting ready for the next one. Okay, we all should take precautions because it could happen any time. Hopefully not, hopefully it's five hundred. We've had a lot of storms. The first priority y'all should do with your NERDA money, first priority, million dollars y'all get, if y'all get it, hopefully you will, is to keep this, clean this ditch, clean this stormwater canal, excuse me, dredge it out like it was sixty years ago.
Thank you, Robert.
Appreciate your time.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Chester?
I'll be very brief.
Please.
First of all, first, first of all, I want to thank you all for what happened and transpired today. But in the near future, what our plan is going to be for getting public to understand what we're going, go through the city and try our best to make sure the knowledge of what we're doing is going to get out to the people. We know that we did the best we can in trying to get that information out with committees, with, uh, uh, Brother Langston over there. We even held town council meetings and so to get the people the knowledge about what's going to happen. But I want to say this right here, we're not just talking about brick and mortar. We also been discussing about how to bring funds into the community. We've already gotten work with FEMA that's going to be volunteering work with us, we've got USDA that's going to be working with us, Triumph Fund is going to be calling us back to the table again. So the rezoning and the revitalization isn't just about brick and mortar. It's about really bringing all those entities into place so that not only the city won't, we kind of empty the city out, uh, not having to pay everything. We think we can bring some funds in. Commissioner Ashbrook has been to some of those meetings, but we have brought people in from just about everywhere and they want to, what? Uh, put funds into the plan that we have in Port St. Joe. But my plan for this day forward is that every three months if possible, I might have Eric Langston help me do this, that we put on an open, uh, environment for, at the gym so that we can get as many people involved as possible. But we did what we could to make sure everybody was notified, and I'd say, and we hate that it went personal and to the point that, you know.
This over, this over, let's move forward.
Yeah, we, we will undo it, but I'm, I'm just saying that we have a lot more on the table and we're going to try to work with the city so this information will be filtered properly. And with that right there, you know, I thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, anybody else? That's the third time, come on. Oh, no, Marvin, but you.
Oh, oh.
Come on, Chris.
Kristy McElroy, Port St. Joe, Woodward Avenue. Charlotte, I don't let y'all kind of share these.
We'll share.
Now, I'll just, I'll let these guys share and you can have your own, please.
Thank you.
I, I went ahead and blew that up. So what you have is, um, of course, the county was the one that asked for the pipe plan for a sports complex. They paid for it out of TDC money. Uh, I'm going to give this document also to Ms. Charlotte. I don't know why the county was paying for a pipe plan in the city, especially in a tidally driven wetland area that, that, that ditch is so large and as Mr. Branch said, imperative to the, our safety. So, of course, you know, we have here, um, the pipe contract where Ward McDaniel signed this contract with Dewberry to do a pipe plan. So in that document right there, you can see the pipe plan. Well, it's pretty easy to see why they wanted a pipe. They want a pipe in, in order to put brand new fields over that land. Now, if you look at our property, it's pretty easy to see how close you are to us. So this is a safety issue. And I keep hearing and I, and I see this trend of narrative about we should give up our fight because that property out at, uh, Field of Dreams, it's a done deal. It's spoken for. It's spoken for, for workhouse, uh, housing, workforce housing. I don't believe that it's spoken for. I believe that St. Joe deeded this property to the city and the people that tell me, give it up, it's spoken for, are people outside of our city. And they need to stop. This need to stop. Because here's what's going to happen, gentlemen, we're getting a NERDA grant. People within DEP in Northwest Florida Water Management District have seen all of this. They've seen all the communications and that NERDA grant is for cleaning up our bed. It is not for inserting a pipe in the ground to pick up real estate for a sports complex. The NERDA grant is for existing conditions based off of what's going on in that area now. So we need to improve the water flow. We need to improve the quality of our bed. We had the FEMA people here and I stepped out with that gentleman because he asked me to. Give me one more second. We should be not just talking about workforce housing, but resiliency for all neighborhoods. So you're not allowed to sacrifice my neighborhood and put workforce housing out here and compromise my neighborhood when the next disaster comes because none of us are God and none of us have a crystal ball. And I have to tell you, it's not going to just affect me and the people between eighth and sixteenth. You back up water and it's going to go back the other way, back into the city. It's going to go forward past Sixteenth Street because water's going to do what water does. So I'm sorry, I know it sounds like we're beating a dead horse, but every time I look at this stuff, I just sit there and think, are you utilizing the right hemisphere of your brain? Right hemisphere is all about analysis and logic. So once again, I'm going to hand this deeded information about the St. Joe property that is designed for a sports complex and I certainly hope we don't do something that would jeopardize a sports complex in this property.
Thank you. Marvin, you still want to speak? Please, please be brief.
It can be brief, I promise you that. Yeah, yeah, my name is Marvin Davis, three twenty-fourth Avenue, Port St. Joe, Florida. The only thing I want to just present to y'all, ask you all, is we've been talking about housing, 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 and we've talked about the eighty thousand, I think up to eight thousand dollars to help people with their home. Are there going to be a workshop?
That's the county, that county has that money.
Okay.
I think they're working on, uh, how you qualify and so forth.
Yes, workshop income levels.
Income, I mean, there's a lot, a point system they're going to have that, you know, qualifies your, they're working on it.
Okay, okay.
The county, I'm sure will have that.
Okay, good, good thing, because I want our people to be educated on how we all can benefit to make our city a much better city. Uh, the other thing is, I know this is a county issue because I'm going to bring it up to the county, that's related to the school board, and that is, I'm a retired educator, also a retired veteran also. The number of teachers of color in our classroom, since Port St. Joe High School is in the city, I consider this city is part of this school board also. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the number of, of, especially African-American teacher, but just teachers in color in general in the classroom. I understand it is down to probably less than a handful, if that, that's, that's, that's a problem. I think it's something that needs to be addressed. Will it be, uh, resolved this school year? Probably not. But I think as we move forward, we do need to make an assertive effort to get more teachers of color in the classroom. It makes a difference, diversity in the, from the teachers makes a big difference. I tell you, I was there for twelve years in central Florida and two years over there in, in Bay County before I retired last year, and I do know it makes a difference, not only just to the teacher, but to the students to see that.
I'll pass that on to, uh, Assistant Norton and, of course, encourage you to go to their board.
Oh, yeah, you better believe it, yeah, so, 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 we got a good city, we're going to work together.
Appreciate you.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
I think we're having a problem with finding teachers in general.
Well, I bet they are right now.
Yeah.
So, come on up, Mr. Morris. Oh, yeah.
I have a few things that I'd like to say about tonight. First thing, did, did y'all ever even think about what the conditions of that hurricane was? What was the tide when the hurricane came in? It was low tide, wasn't it? I don't remember.
There wasn't any water in the bay. There wasn't any water in the bay.
It was low tide. It was low tide too, thank you. And there was very little rain, weren't there?
Right.
What if it had been high tide and rain? You just think about the houses that it did destroy.
Yeah.
Just think, it would have been all the way past Marvin. Keep that in mind. And one thing about the canal, it needs dredging. It's on low tide and high tide. It's from Sixteenth to Tenth, it needs dredging now. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, anybody else, Charles, gatherers?
I hate to do it, you know, just in my mind, been in the league for three hours, it's got a heart of fathom, but I'd still ask the question because, you know, I said it a while ago, but I think it was at the wrong time, talking about policy and procedure, but, but we still need to entertain that, a cause and fight, like I said, just, just for instance, just here, just looking, uh, one, one, and I know you do the best you can, one gentleman get three minutes and a half, one gentleman get three minutes, one gentleman get five minutes. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and that's a problem because if I'm doing it, and I can say, what the last thing I'm going to leave which you got, on the proposal, when people writing up the signatures up here, have, do anybody check to make sure that I brought a proposal that would hundred signatures, the signatures actual by the people or just something I documented? Do anybody ever check on that?
It depends on what it is. But just for somebody to sign in, mainly that's just for purposes for helping out with the, man.
He's talking about petitions.
I'm talking petitions.
I don't think we know.
I know, if you're not, that's just something I would imagine becomes for a legal issue at that point in time.
And, and see, in this day and time, a legal issue can jump off just like that.
Yeah.
So with policy, policy than procedure, I was, I was talking to Mr. Jim, but policy than procedure is to be followed all the time, whether, you know, I can say, so this is, it's, this is another thing just for, to you guys, let's look at something.
We talk, we, that's not, not a bad idea, really not.
Thank you, Charles.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, Commissioners, who would start? Commissioner Hoffman?
I only have one item, it's a carryover from our last meeting. At our last meeting, we
At our last meeting, we discussed and initially passed a plat approval for the St. Joe Corporation landmark, and at that time, I brought up, uh, the issue that I feel like the St. Joe Corporation owes the city of Fort St. Joe two hundred thousand dollars based on, uh, an agreement years back, and I had asked our attorney to research that, and, and I'd like a response if you have.
Mr. Commissioner, I'm still working through it. We're going back to two thousand and five, ultimately, and trying to build that history back, it's taking, you know, some more time. I have obtained a copy of the ordinance which was in effect of the county, which I would anticipate St. Joe's gonna rely on. Um, the ordinance in effect of the county has the two hundred thousand payment for the same exact thing. It's essentially the city copied and pasted the county's ordinance. So, unless I can find something, um, new that would bind, uh, Fort St. Joe, I think they're, they, we're gonna have a difficult time, because they're gonna say, well, we paid it, and not only paid it, but we paid it for the exact, exact same purpose. Um, we need some agreement between the city and St. Joe other than just this ordinance, um, because I think it's a, not necessarily a winning argument, I'm not prepared to give that legal opinion yet, but I think it's a fair argument for them to say, we paid it, and it was for the, the verbiage is exactly the same, switch county and city out is the exact same. We paid it, we've done our part, uh, we shouldn't have to pay four hundred thousand. Should pay two hundred thousand for, if that doesn't fire up the exception.
Well, and what little bit I had, uh, researched, I was under the understanding that there were two agreements made, one with the city of Fort St. Joe, and then a second agreement made with the county, and I think they, uh, it's my interpretation that they would stand along. So I, I, you know, I'll give you the time that you need, obviously, uh, but the question that I'm, I'm asking you to answer eventually is not can we recover it, or what are our odds on recovering, it's just simply, do you feel that the St. Joe Corporation owes the city of Fort St. Joe the two hundred thousand?
And right now, you use the term agreement, I've seen no agreement between the city and the St. Joe company, or the subsidiary company, that's building more, actually, no agreements. I wish, if I could find one, I would feel, well, I would have a very competent outlook as of now and later, but that's what I'm looking for, something between the city and St. Joe, um, that would bind them beyond just this ordinance, because it's essentially a copy and a paste from the county, and I think it's, um, problematic from a legal standpoint for the city, because it addresses the same thing. If it addresses two different topics, I would have a different outlook, but because it's the exact same, um, verbiage, I need something else to help strengthen my argument, and that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I understand that, maybe, maybe you could speak to the attorney that was representing the city at the time, and, and get an idea of what the intention of the, uh, the second ordinance, which represented the city, was all about. Um, 'cause that's really what it's gonna come down to, what was the intent, uh, of two thousand and five of the city commissioners, the mayor, and, and what was their instructions on, on collecting the two hundred thousand?
Yes, sure, and not only intent, but could have had the best intentions, we need something besides just the intent of the commission, um, but I'll, I'll do it as you have requested. I'll speak to Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Allen, only thing I have, I mentioned it two or three times at, at this public meeting, Jim, let's get some air conditioning. We've ordered it today, Commissioner. Yes. Ashbrook?
Uh, real short, brief, uh, some good news from Washington. Uh, a bill has been introduced by our Congressman Neil Dunn, the Residential Recovery Zone Act, which is essentially what we've been trying to push for, for the last nine months, uh, and just a brief synopsis, this bill allows a new tax credit for the purchase of a principal residence in a residential recovery zone. The credit is equal to ten percent of the purchase price of the residence, which may not exceed one point five million. The dollar amount of the credit is limited to eight thousand dollars in a taxable year. It also allows the Chief Executive Officer of the state to designate certain population census tracts in areas related to federally declared disasters as opportunity zones. This makes investments in the areas, investments in the areas eligible for various tax incentives. Uh, so you want to follow that, it's H R thirty-seven ninety, uh, it has just been introduced in the House, which was amazing that it got that far, uh, still has a couple stops, but hopefully soon it'll be law.
What name is it? What was H R thirty-seven ninety?
It is thirty-seven, H R thirty-seven ninety, House Resolution, and it is the Residential Recovery Zone Act.
Got a copy of it here, if anybody would like to look at it. Anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Langston?
Um, I just want to say there's a couple of things, um, at, um, Washington Gem that needs to be looked into windows. Um, I guess we need to get insurance, the insurance and, um, get everything, um, uh, under control, the windows, I think it's because of the windows that, um, the air conditioner is, um, not really working like it should because of the holes in the, the broken windows, so, and, um, I think we need to really look at getting, um, Washington High, um, um, fixed up, because during hurricanes, um, uh, post hurricane, I'm sorry, post hurricane, we'll have a facility set up that, um, people can come in, use the restroom, get a hot meal, take a good shower, um, check on their home, and, um, get back out to where they were staying at before they get home, you know? So, that's why I'm really pushing, um, um, this thing about Washington High, it needs to be done, um, as soon as we can, I notice a lot of other things that need to be done in the city, but I just wanted to put that on our priority list. Um, summer school is out, uh, once we get, what we need to get done, I really would like to see some windows and, and some other things done inside, um, Washington High.
Anything else? I, I have nothing today, so is there a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Yeah.